Turn the microphone down. Okay, good. Thank you all for joining us. This is the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for April 3rd, 2023. Thank you all for being here. We have four action items or agenda items. The number one is the Race and Equity Task Force Recommendation Report. Number two is Sales Tax Extension Survey Results. Item number three is the Mixed Use Code Updates. And item number four is Facial Recognition Technology Update. And we will start our meeting, as we usually do, with public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak tonight, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may come to the podium. And if you're joining us online, please raise your hand and we will bring you into the meeting. And I'll ask our clerk if anyone has raised their hand and wants to speak. And I don't see anyone sign up and nobody here to speak, so we will complete our public comment portion and go to our first item, which is the Race and Equity Task Force Recommendation Report. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City Manager, is firing up here. And of course, we have a few of our committee members here she'll introduce, but I want to thank Mary Ann for working with this group for quite some time now, I guess. It's been a couple of years, so on very important issue, but a lot of night meetings, Mary Ann, in this group has ticked away. So, Mary Ann, whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you. In February 2021, the Race and Equity Task Force was appointed by city council with the directive to carry out a thorough review of city policies and services to identify specific areas that may contribute to discrimination and to provide recommendations to council to help make the city a more inclusive place. Tonight, the task force will be presenting their recommendations to city council after two years of research, review, and deliberation. In total, this group has provided over 100 recommendations for consideration. I'm incredibly proud of the hard work and dedication that this group of volunteers has demonstrated throughout this process. Two years of equity work can be exhausting because the reason this group applied to the task to be task force members to begin with is because they care very deeply about this subject. It's been hard, but this group has never wavered in its work, knowing their ultimate goal is to make Wheat Ridge a more inclusive and responsive community. So tonight, we have five task force members who'll be presenting. We have Jenny Snell, Jeff Richards, Alex Goldsmith, Anisa Valdez, and Diana Lopez. We also have several task force members here in the audience with us and supporting us virtually as well. Tonight, they will be covering an overview, general recommendations, next steps, their council ask, which includes consensus on two items, and then they'll be available for any questions. So, without any further ado, I will hand it over to Alex Goldsmith to get us started.
She has worked tirelessly with us over the last two years. We would be nowhere near here without her, so thank you so much. The Race and Equity Task Force was formed after Resolution Number 352020 was passed on June 22nd, 2020. In February 2021, city council appointed 20 community members to the task force with four from each council district, one through four, and four members at large. I myself decided to apply because I'm a newer member to Wheat Ridge and was eager to find ways to become more involved in the community around me. The task force began its work on March 25th, 2021, and met on the second and fourth Thursday of each month for two years. Since 2021, the task force has held official meetings a total of 40 times. Additional 30 meetings were conducted in smaller groups outside the larger task force meetings, and all members worked individually, conducting research, working on recommendations, and editing the recommendation report. In total, the task force collectively spent over 1,000 volunteer hours over two years to complete this report. The bulk of the early work of the task force can be broken into three categories. First were group trainings led by the Equity Project, Dr. Dunida Mosby Tyler and Monica D. Williams, who provided the task force with a background in diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and guided the task force in creating an equity lens to use as a baseline for future work. Presentations by staff representatives was the second within the city of Wheat Ridge, which focused on the formation of the city of Wheat Ridge, the city charter, and all the legal underpinnings of these documents. And lastly, meetings that concerned the self-governments of the group itself, resulting in the task force selecting chairs and creating bylaws. With a background in place, the task force established 11 focus areas to be researched. The recommendations included in this report are in two parts: recommendations for each focus area and general recommendations that did not fit within a specific focus area. The focus areas were courts, police, education, human resources, elections, economic opportunity, health, homelessness, affordable housing, infrastructure, and city charter. For the staff presentations, we would like to thank everyone who came and helped us along: Patrick Goff and Jerry Dahl, Sarah Spalding and Bridgette Devork, Jeff Hurt, Ashley Holland, Daryl Guadnola, Chris Randall, Rebecca Rodabaugh, Scott Cutler, Rana Razikew, Ariane Rivera, Dave Kohler, Zach Lovato, Steve Art, Steve Kirkpatrick, Michael Clausen, and Millie Lewis. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to talk about the report's format.
All right. Thank you. Hi, I'm Jenny Snell, and I live in District One. My wife Megan and I have lived here since 2014. I chose to be a part of the task force to ensure that Wheat Ridge is a safe place, is a safe and welcoming place for everyone to live and work in, and for all voices to be heard. I'm going to just give you a few notes on the format of our report. I know that you've seen it already, but I wanted to point out a few things for you as you continue to read through it and digest it. The overall thought behind this layout and format is that this report is meant to be a living document that is used to read and refer back to frequently. We're proud of this report and the amount of great information it holds. You'll see that it includes our city land acknowledgement, our preamble, and a dedication to task force member Saha Amara Singham, who we lost last year. There's also a list of all task force members and a list of folks to whom we owe a great deal of thanks for the guidance and information through this process. Then you'll see the table of contents and executive summary. Next, there is our list of general recommendations, which are listed in a matrix that categorizes each recommendation by time, cost, and DEI benefit. We did our best to estimate implementation time into short, medium, and long term, and cost into low, medium, and high. And DEI benefit is just that. This system is utilized throughout the report so that you have a clear picture of time, cost, and benefit for this important work. Now I'm going to turn it over to Diana. She's going to take us through our next step.
Okay. Good evening and buenos noches. My name is Diana Lopez, and my text is probably large enough for you to see, Rachel. I thought I lost my glasses, or I did lose my glasses, and I finally found these little cheaters, so let's see what we can do here. First of all, I want to applaud you all for taking on this important endeavor and for wanting Wheat Ridge to be better. I'm guessing you've done your own research to know why utilizing a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens in local government is so important. Working with Dr. Tyler on this task force also showed us its importance. DEI concepts focus on promoting fair participation where everyone has the resources and the opportunities they need to be successful. A DEI lens is like a pair of glasses. It helps you to see things from a new perspective. It ensures that we are asking ourselves the questions that will make us think about being equitable and inclusive in every aspect of our work and our interactions. It's something you'll use daily. It collectively addresses systemic barriers and inequities. The first of our general priority recommendations is that Wheat Ridge develop and adopt a citywide DEI lens. This is a set of questions to ask when planning, developing, or evaluating a policy, program, or decision. The task force also recommends that the city of Wheat Ridge join the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, or GAR, a national network of governments working to achieve racial equity and advance opportunities for all. This work is urgent, and it's time for the Wheat Ridge staff to hold each other accountable by implementing these recommendations. Like tennis or learning any new skill, it's going to be awkward at first. You're going to make a lot of mistakes, will make a lot of mistakes, and it will take time. But with practice, it will not require conscious thought about DEI every time a decision or evaluation has to be made. It will eventually become automatic. And eventually, too, it will just become how we do business in Wheat Ridge. Together, we will all get better. Now I'll turn it over to Anisa.
Hello, I'm Anisa. There's a lot of recommendations that we're asking, but the most, a very important one is creating a position for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI, manager for the city. Additionally, consider creating an internship along with this position. Allows a way to create equity for all of Wheat Ridge. And now to Jeff.
I want to take this opportunity to thank the co-chairs Jenny Snell, Terry Gale, and Alex Goldsmith. I'd also like to thank the task force members who gave it energy, a commodity that brought us through not only the research and interviews mentioned, but a global pandemic to boot. I'm seconding Diana's thanks to the city for participating in this work and taking the next step begun during the civil rights movement. I would also like to thank the city of Wheat Ridge Police Department for engaging in a conversation during challenging times. Lastly, let's remember those whose death spurred us to action in the first place: George Floyd, Elijah McLean, Breonna Taylor, Akeem Terrell, and unfortunately, the list goes on. Our next priorities are to create an oversight board of Wheat Ridge residents to address community complaints regarding all city departments, to ensure everyone has an equal voice. I should say, all city departments except for one. This is distinguish from a police oversight committee, which would be separate and is addressed in the police section under recommendations. This group would be dedicated to DEI subjects and issues within the city of Wheat Ridge. It should be independent of city management. Citizens need to be assured that there's an independent community that they can rely on to participate in and bring issues forward. We would like them to be self-determined and self-administered. The intent is to fill this group with a diverse set of citizens, including people that are experiencing housing issues. The next recommendation is to review the city charter and update it every eight to 12 years to help keep it relevant. A partial review was completed by the task force. That review led to the major subject areas already covered and already cited by Alex, but a section-by-section review fell outside the scope or completed. Part and parcel to that, this type of review requires legal expertise not currently available inside the task force. In addition, the city is already in the process of conducting this kind of review, but it should be repeated as related laws and policies are updated and changed. As an example, we know that the city has already begun changing gender terminology to be inclusive, but that is only one essential step to ensuring that the city charter is fair and inclusive. And now I'd like to hand it back to Alex.
We, the task force, recommend that the city of Wheat Ridge partners with or develops a crisis response team similar to the Denver STAR program. This service will better connect mental health providers with individuals in need of support. The Denver Support Team Assisted Response Program is a mobile crisis response team that specializes in providing social support to people experiencing behavioral or mental health crises. This program emphasizes trauma-informed care and collaborates closely with community partners, mental health providers, law enforcement agencies, and community organizations. This ensures an effective alternative response to engage individuals experiencing distress related to mental health, poverty, homelessness, and substance abuse. Currently, the police force in our city is responsible for responding to all crises that affect community safety, which can be overwhelming and plays additional burden on officers who are not the appropriate professionals to handle all situations. It is important to create specialized response teams to provide adaptive support to the individual crisis. By establishing a STAR program, Wheat Ridge can take its first step in equipping our city with the best response team for various situations. We suggest exploring options to partner with Denver's current STAR program and provide resources to help expand its service reach to include Wheat Ridge. Alternatively, we could collaborate with other Jeffco cities to create our own front-range STAR program. In either case, Lutheran Medical Center can provide essential support by connecting us with qualified professionals like emergency medical technicians and behavioral health clinicians. Implementing a crisis response program like STAR would provide immediate benefits to our community and police force. As citizens, we want to see our tax dollars invested in services that have a direct, positive impact on our community. This program presents an opportunity for our city to effectively and safely engage with our most vulnerable neighbors. And for the last few recommendations, I'll pass it off to Jenny.
Thanks, Alex. I am going to cover the next two, the first one being provide support for the growth of the hub at Stevens and/or Everett. You'll see it says Everett up there, and I'll get to that in just a moment. This recommendation is twofold: increase support for the existing hub at Stevens Elementary and/or utilize assistance to create an additional hub at another Wheat Ridge area school, which we identified as Everett Middle School. The hub serves all Wheat Ridge schools, both students and their families, in areas like food, school supplies, clothing, hygiene products, and other resource services. It is important to note that the hub serves all children up to age 21, which is impactful for those students who are either working on post-graduation school plans, pursuing their GED, or otherwise re-engaging in their education. The services and goods that the hub provides are an immense benefit to many students and their families. Now to number seven, this is provide ongoing anti-bias training for all city employees and contractors. Also known as unconscious bias or implicit bias training, this training seeks to raise awareness of the mental shortcuts that lead to snap judgments, often based on race and/or gender, about people's talents or character. Its goal is to reduce bias in attitudes and behaviors at work, from hiring and promotion decisions to interactions with customers and colleagues. Ongoing training is recommended to ensure that this is front of mind for all. There are a good number of trainings that are available at low or no cost. Now I'm going to hand it over to Diana again.
It is important that the city considers all, I'm sorry, considers accessibility at all levels to ensure that everyone has the same access to information. Therefore, our last general recommendation is to improve the city's website and citywide communications to include easier navigation for seniors, ADA accommodations, and more multilingual access. And now, Anisa will talk about next steps.
Following the presentation of the Race and Equity Task Force recommendations, the task force would like city council to consider the future of the group. The recommendation of the task force is the group to transition to an advisory committee, meeting monthly and working closely with the city staff to implement the report recommendations and advise city council on decisions related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The task force would also like to take a brief head days over the summer before reopening and then relaunching the new committee in the fall with a recruitment of new members as needed. The task force is looking for consensus from city council to, one, accept the Race and Equity Task Force Recommendation Report as a guiding document for future discussions; two, transition the Race and Equity Task Force to a advisory committee to advise city council on future DEI policies-related matters. And now we are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Very great presentation. Appreciate all of that. We'll open it up from questions from council. Start with Councilor Hoppy, then Councilor Nosler Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the task force. What a heavy lift. And we knew it was a heavy lift when we asked you to do it. And we knew that it was going to take the time and the dedication that you put into it, and I appreciate that because there are a lot of things that I care about, but you only have so much time in your day, and so you have to count on partners to carry forward that work. And so thank you with great gratitude. I really appreciate it. A few of the things that I, I just wanted to check in on a few of the things from the general priority. First off, this is a great report, and it's very much, when I read it, I had to tell myself, okay, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time, right? So, I do, I do support accepting the recommendation, accepting the report, and I do support transitioning the Race and Equity Task Force into an advisory committee. With that, though, there are a few things on the general priority recommendations I have some questions about. So, the, the developing and adopting the citywide race, diversity, equity lens, and you guys on page eight have a kind of a guideline on what that would be. I feel like that probably should go in conjunction with transitioning to the Race and Equity Task Force for the advisory committee, but I wanted to just ask you if that's what you guys felt the advisory committee would be a part of.
So, you're asking if, if we feel that that should be part of what the advisory committee does, is that?
Yeah, if it would be in conjunction with the advisory committee, or if that's something that you wanted to be developed before the advisory committee?
I don't think we discussed that, really. I think we were winning pretty heavily on the GARE documentation because frankly, it is a really good step-by-step, this is how you do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we would like, as the advisory committee, to be involved in the conversation, but our goal was that the city council itself would take on the work to create the equity lens, or the city staff in conjunction with city council, because this work could be incredibly beneficial for those that are elected into the leadership positions or is job is professionally to do this work.
Great, thanks. And then the other question that I wanted to ask is, so there's one that is, review the city charter and update it every eight to 12 years. Would that be something that we would do in conjunction with our comp plan that we have coming up? Or would that be something that we would probably put together an advisory committee to do?
I really think it's separate, totally separate initiative from a comp plan process. I think you might learn some stuff through the comp plan, so maybe it's in conjunction or after. You could definitely learn a few things from that, Lauren. I don't know. Lauren agrees. Thumbs up from Lauren.
Yeah, okay. And then my other question is about the hub at Everett Middle School. You know, we had heard that the, having the hub just at Stevens was difficult for some of the other elementaries and had started doing kindness closets in the elementaries. They got some seed money and started that. And the thought behind that was then, that they would then go to the outside agency committee, which has a new name that I'm forgetting right now.
Community Partner Grant Program.
Community Partner Grant Program is what it's now called. And that's where they would go to apply for grant money to support those things. So, I'm wondering if the idea around this is that we still have those and also a hub at Everett? Yes?
Yeah, I think with, during our discussions, the thought was sort of like what you alluded to, like the, you know, having one, especially over on the east side, sometimes it's a little more difficult to get to, so an additional, additional one. But I don't think that I personally was up to speed on the kindness closets, which is wonderful, and then that process of going with grants. So, I think that that fits perfectly. What are you all?
Great. And then just my last thing is, can we get an update? I know we're working on our website, or we actually just went live with our new website. And so with the recommendations on making sure that the navigation for seniors and the ADA and the multilingual access, are those things that we addressed when we redid our website?
Yeah, the ADA was, the main reason we did that is, I don't know, Allie or Amanda want to speak to that real quickly on what was accomplished with the website upgrade?
Just to touch on that briefly, when we relaunched our website, I believe it was February 21st, it was ADA compliant with the exception of PDFs at that time. Since we've posted to it since then, it's possible that it's fallen back out of compliance, but we are working right now on policies and procedures to ensure that we stay compliant. And we're also looking at remediating the PDFs that we have on our website, so more to that. More on that to come.
Great, thanks. And then process-wise, do we need to do like a formal adoption, or how do we do that?
I think just similar to the sustainability plan, we brought it back to a regular meeting for adoption, did we? Or just accepted at a study session? Just a consensus to accept it as a guiding document?
So, and the bylaws are in there, so would we, would the bylaws need to be updated if it transitions to an advisory committee?
I think they probably would, yeah.
Great, thank you. Thanks for all your work, everybody.
Thank you. Councilman Nosler Beck.
Janice took all of mine, including the just immense gratitude for everyone and their time. This was a huge, huge task that we, we set out to take, and I don't think we actually gave a lot of parameters on exactly what we needed out of this, and I don't know if that was on purpose. It was because I think we were in a bit of uncharted territory, and so I just am so grateful to, I talk about this a lot, but one of our biggest resources that all of us have that is just something we never have enough of is time. And so the investment of your time in this work is just, is, it's been years that you all have been working on this, and we're so grateful because there's so much of all of you in this work, and I'm just so grateful, and I know everybody is. I, I guess, Janice did touch on quite a few of my questions that I had, so I'm just going to dig a little bit deeper on a couple of things that I'd like to make sure that we don't lose sight of as a council. I'm in support of adopting this this evening, but when we were talking about the STAR program in Denver, that really got me excited, and I would love it if we could consider as a council either going to see what they're doing in Denver with that program and learning a little bit more about it, if we could go on a field trip or something, to learn to learn about that a bit more. Or if there's other communities outside of Denver that are doing it that are, you know, our size community or regional options out there, I think that would be great. And then, just on the hubs, just to further explain a little bit of what Councilwoman Hoppe was talking about is that what we learned, both Councilor Stites and I learned when we, we were working with a lot of the schools in the area was that families, caregivers don't necessarily have the time to go to another place outside of their school. So, they need one-stop shopping, whether for whatever they might need when they're picking up their students or, or anything. And I really appreciate us just talking about our schools as a real community resource in all of this because now that the schools are going to be going through these transitions, we're going to need to make those centers that much more important to the community. So, I'm in support of all of this. I could go on and on in, in, in so much of the work that's been done. But just wanted to highlight those two pieces that I'm really excited to get to work on and appreciate y'all very much.
Thank you. Yes, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I'm still grateful that you are excited about the Star Program in the US. Obviously, that some of the Star Programs have actually taken a big role. So, they develop and state the part of the state for, for our experience in which you could provide, maybe the part of the area. And I'm going to go along with it. So, if we're looking for something to, or certainly a student, you have something that you probably need to do and that you, that I find interesting.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone in the room who's worked on this and those who are not in the room who contributed to it. It's been stated and cannot be overstated, the appreciation for the amount of work. But not just the amount of work, but the type of work and the skill and experience that everyone brought to it. It dawned on me pretty quickly after you started and then again and again many times since that you've been uniquely tasked with something that's never happened in our city before. And it wasn't just looking at our city with a new lens to find new expectations about how we operate and how we, we serve our community, but really comprehensively examining our city as a whole. So, in some senses, I'm looking at like the experts on our community. I don't know anyone who probably knows Wheat Ridge better than you do at this point. So, thank you for holding that expertise and, and bringing forward what you have. A couple of things, I do support adopting it and moving forward with the, the recommendations. One thing that I really appreciated about it when I read it, first of all, everyone likes to skim. Everyone loves, loves to skim a document. So, I love that I was able to skim it and then go back and chew on it and digest it. Like, you really presented it in a way that is really easy to understand the work that you've done and what's important. And then, go back and like mine out the, the details. And I really appreciated sort of the framing of what's working and what are the opportunities. And I think that's, that's really helpful for everyone to try and figure out how to find their, their place in here. I absolutely support advisory committee. I think I've been asking about advisory committees since the first time you came to us because that really is the work that is ongoing. And you've done this first heavy lift, but we need to keep the work moving forward. So, it's, Janice brought up, Councilwoman Hoppe brought up some of it. But I think to me, on council bringing forward the, the GARE recommendations, bringing forward a study session, what does that lens look like? So, I'd like to propose that we, we do that and then discuss, you know, the scope of the advisory committee, you know, given the recommendations that are coming forward so that, you know, we're both having an in-continued service, but also not overburdening people with, you know, we don't want to burn, burn people out. So, I'd like to bring that forward for a study session while, while everyone's on hiatus, a much-earned hiatus. And with that, just so much, so much gratitude. And I, one thing that's not, that's actually not in here and it's okay that it's not in here, but I found myself curious about as an elected official was how can we as elected officials do more and do better? And how we engage with the community to better represent people? And I think there's a lot in here about the mechanics of our city as, as an operation. But I really welcome, you know, individuals to please reach out to me specifically. But I'm sure all of my peers would be open to hearing, you know, what are things we can be doing better to? We, my, my ears are open and it was, one of them works pretty well still. And I would really love to hear from you because I'm very, very cognizant that, you know, I represent an entire district and only hear from a small percentage. And, and a, you know, a slightly larger percentage probably is aware of what's going on in the city. And I'd love to change that moving forward. So, would welcome your thoughts. But thank you again.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from council? Council, Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you. One, one other thing that I had remembered reading and had to go back and look at it. The Arvada Fire Department has a program similar to the STAR. What, what have you found as far as like being able to get Wheat Ridge included into that program? Or like what would it take to, to kind of bring that expertise and information into our city?
From my experience, they are open and ready to have conversations with neighboring cities. They are readily available and excited to work with Wheat Ridge if that's the partnership that they want to take on. I know Arvada did do a lot of research partnership with Denver itself. I don't know if it's a standalone project or if the program itself does partner directly with Denver. But I do know that they use a lot of the foundations that they're putting.
Do you feel that that would be appropriate to tag that in with the, the GARE conversation?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think that's appropriate. I just, you know, there would need to be some structure on that. I think either one of those conversations could go on for a long time.
Thanks. Good heads up for scheduling purposes.
Councilor Hutchinson. A lot of H's.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's very interesting about the STAR program that you brought up, possibly coordinating or getting information from Lutheran Hospital. When they first started having their meetings about relocating, I had brought up what was their concern regarding mental health. And they did state, yes, we are very, you know, interested in mental health, even though they sold West Pines, you know. But that is something they would also be a resource for behavioral health people. We have a shortage of, even in the schools, you know, I mean, it's, it's reality. So, they would be a good resource possibly. But I think it's a good connection, you know, to have them involved because, you know, they're into prevention and they're part of the city. Thank you. And thanks to everybody for the work that you've done.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Councilor Doosman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again to this group. You know, it's been two years in the making. I know it's a huge undertaking to address all of this. And like Councilmember Holtein said, it was very well-formatted, easy to read. I do have several questions and points of clarification that I would like either from the task force and/or city staff. First of all, so if we were to accept this as a guiding document for future discussion, does that mean that a lot of these recommendations that, that have been made are going to come forward at study sessions to be discussed and potentially have departments, department heads weigh in on and further researches to like the impact and, and further details?
That's our intent, is to bring these back as individual items, depending on how big they are. As specifically a STAR-type program, the city's done a lot of work behind, around that. We have a partnership with Jefferson Center right now, Mental Health. We have a full-time co-responder in-house now. So, we'd love to come into council and talk to you about that and see if you want to expand that in any, any way. But yeah, that's our intent, is to bring these back to council for.
Okay, because I mean, I, I am in support of accepting this as, you know, a basis for future discussion. But having read through it and, and just kind of looking at certain specific recommendations, I think it would need much further conversation around that. And, and I personally don't necessarily support a lot of, or some of the recommendations that are made. And I, and I would really want others like on our team to, to weigh in on it prior to me adopting or accepting those recommendations. And then, as far as the advisory committee, what, what would that look like? Would it be kind of like our process for boards and commission where we're taking applications and then appointing? Or, or what's the idea of how that would look?
I think we'd like direction from council on that too. So, probably a future study session to talk about how you would like, if that's council-appointed or another, another direction. But we'd like, since it would be a council advisory board or committee, we'd like your direction on that.
Okay, because I think one, one of the specific general priority recommendations that I'd need much more information about before supporting would be the Oversight Board of Wheat Ridge residents to address all community complaints and, and how that might be formatted and kind of, any kind of advisory or how that would work as far as like, I mean, I'm assuming that they wouldn't be paid, but I, I don't know legally how that would work. And, and so, there's, I think, a lot of questions that I have in regards to many of the recommendations. And so, I just, I'm okay to support and consent to moving this forward. And for discussion at a later time, I just, it's really meaty. And so, I, like, I don't want to get down into the weeds, but I, I think it's necessary at a future time to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everybody here. I, I think everybody said it already, but obviously, two years worth of work. I mean, two years almost to the day, right? I guess it was February, so about a month off. So, you guys have done a phenomenal job. And as, as Ms. Holtein said, the format of this report was really easy to read and, and the recommendations are easy to kind of look at and, and sough out a little bit. So, really appreciate that. And I know a couple of weeks ago, I think Councilor Hoppe put on the future agendas to talk about boards and commissions and kind of clean that up. So, that might be a good avenue that night to, to do that. I don't think it's, I don't think we have it set for a future exact agenda, but we can move that up a little bit. So, so while you guys are on hiatus over the summer, we can kind of figure out what that board looks like because I don't think we want a 20-person review board. But, but like I said, I, I support moving this forward and then kind of going through the individual recommendations as, as they lay a little bit more over, over the future couple of months and study sessions. And, and as we get that board going, working with those individuals and, and putting that together. But fantastic job, everybody who worked on this. This is, this is a lot of work. And I don't know, I know I, I talked with Diane shortly after we created this and we had a long conversation. But I mean, obviously, you know, there was not a whole lot to, to go on. So, you guys had to create your own structure and framework and everything. And you guys, Mary Ann, you all did a phenomenal job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to a consensus, any further questions or comments? Councilor Hoppe?
I just wanted to just maybe put out a different consensus besides these recommendations to, just to see if I can get support to bring him, bring him forward to a future study session, the, the GARE information. And, and then potentially also speaking with the Arvada Fire Department about their program. And just adding that to another study session.
Yeah, and we, we are partnering already with Arvada. We can bring, we can bring a presentation in on what we're doing. But we're already partnering with them on that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you for this report. Very interesting, a lot of work. Did you have something else?
No, I just, I think, I think Councilmember Hoppe was asking for a consensus.
I was just asking if somebody would support me in bringing that to another study session. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Holtein.
So, we have a question to bring that to another study session. We have consensus on that? Looks like we do.
Thank you.
Okay, now I want to thank you all again for, for a great presentation and a great report and a lot of, a lot of work over the last two years. Geez, it's, you know, I remember sort of getting this together. It doesn't seem like that long ago, but, but it has been. And a great, great report you brought back. We have a recommendation to accept the Race and Equity Task Force Recommendation Report as a guiding document for future discussion. Do we have consensus to, to move that forward? Okay, we do. And number two is to transition the Race and Equity Task Force to an advisory committee to advise city council on future DEI policy-related matters.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So, I just want to clarify the transitioning. So, the language is a little bit, we, we've been talking about bringing it back to study session to talk about what that looks like. So, technically, we're actually dissolving the task force, right? Because they've completed what the task force was, was, and then we're, so we're accepting their recommendation to create an advisory? The transition just catches me a little bit. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear about what it is we're doing tonight and what happens next so that we all get to where we want to go on that.
Tell us, speak a little bit about that. Are we, are we sort of?
Well, just, just to clarify a little bit, one thing that we didn't talk about that is in the report is a recommendation to hire somebody permanently at the position at the city. So, when we talked about transition, and I don't know if this is what everybody's picking up on, but when we talked about transition, we were talking about a group that would help transition to that stage.
We also are hoping that you take on this report. I'm saying that we are going to, to understand this, the whole creation of the, you know, legislation that we can need to have about our community. In this transition, we're hoping that the DEI manager that is hired on will also help. Be the professional that helps to be forward in the recommendation. Whether it's a policy transition or not is, I guess, up to you and to the council. But we want to make sure that our voices as a community and the community that this task force is involved and that, that there was further motion and movement forward to be able to make sure that the recommendation is somewhere. Might not be all recommendations, but we want to still ensure that there is a voice to be shared with yourself.
Okay, I'm glad we're talking about this because, so, so my understanding and reading of it was that the recommendation would be for the city to have an advisory committee that would be advising this, this city on, on, you know, everything from, you know, creating the, the lens to, you know, how we adopt and how we set policies and what are key questions that like staff should do, like in advisory that we would bring issues forward to. Like as we, you know, working on like our housing affordability study, that would be something that the advisory. So, the recommendation is for the city to create that type of seated committee in service to the city in that capacity to do the ongoing citizen review and advisory work. Is that, are we understanding that correctly? Yeah, okay. 100% support that. But I just want to clarify, Jeff, your comments about like creating, like, can you just clarify your comments about either the role of this committee or that committee in relationship to a staff position if, if, like, when, when we get that?
Yeah, when we originally, I, I think it's been over a year ago, we, we gave an update and we talked about hiring a permanent position, a DI position there. So, we still, that's still in the recommendations. The transition that we were talking about was from this period where we're in now to hopefully that period where there's a permanent position. So, like Alex says, so that the, we're ensuring that that work continues forward. We're assuming that that person or that department would, would eventually take that work over and manage it for the city. Because I, that's the other thing, you know, if you, just the scope of what we're talking about doing, right? Every department in the city, every document that we use to manage and structure the city getting reviewed and not just once, but periodically, that's a lot of work to do. I think that one thing that we learned with the task force just in general, even in spite of, if you take out COVID out of there, how daunting and at times overwhelming it all was. So, I, I just think that, and you guys can tell me if you agree, that it's a lot of work and it requires focus, you know. It requires somebody who really is not only devoted to it, but is, has developed skills and experience in those areas. skills and experience in those areas.
Within, by adopting the report, we are adopting your recommendation for that position to be considered, right, by?
To be considered. Yeah, yeah. You're not necessarily adopting any recommendation tonight, just as the recommendations for further discussion.
Right. Okay. So that's inherent by saying we're adopting this for guidance of future conversations. And then, and then the consensus would be for it to come back to council to create an advisory committee. Okay. All right.
Given that understanding, do we have consensus on that, on that portion of it? Looks like we do. Okay. That was the, the two recommendations that we were asked to, to look at. So I think we've got, we've got a great basis to go forward. I want to thank you all very much again. And your, and your committee members, I keep looking around the table, but we have a lot in the audience. And I'm sure we have a number of people online that are, that are joining us. So thank you very much. It's a great, a great start for our city, and I think will lead us in a great direction. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So best thing is for me to just post up up here?
Yeah, because I think your presentation is PDF, I believe, right? So you can't advance that sitting down.
Gotcha. Okay, no worries.
So if you're right, sitting. Make sure I don't close out the, I think I have it right up here. Yeah. There we go. Yeah. So I think, well, you know, you're smart, man. I think, I think you have to, yeah, use that scroll display.
Okay. And it'll pop up up there for me?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they have in their packets.
They do. I guess.
Is there, Steve, is there any?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a share.
Yes, we will. Let's use the best television. It's on my vision. That's good. There we are. How's that?
It's pretty good. Thank you.
Would you rather sit at the table?
No, it doesn't. Will this work? Patrick, we're saying he didn't think the clicker would work.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I can drive it for you, but doesn't.
Let's see.
Yeah. Was it not?
Uh, yeah.
She was just using it from the seat.
That must have been a PowerPoint, though. This is a PDF.
Oh, got it. I tell you what, why don't you sit? I'm all right. Just tell me next what.
Are you sure?
Yeah. 100%. Yeah. 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 Absolutely.
That'll, that'll work better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are excited to be here tonight to present you, present to you the results from our most recent poll that we did. This was a poll that came out of our council retreat this year to look at the possibility of extending the city's temporary half-cent sales tax for a number, a number of more years and for specific projects that we addressed at the, the retreat. So pretty exciting results that we have here. But Ryan Winger is here from Magellan Strategies. That's a firm we hired to do the survey for us. And I'm just going to let him explain the methodology and the results. Ryan?
Thanks, Patrick, and thank you all for your time tonight. I feel a little deflated. The room, like, emptied before I came up here. I promise, this, this is exciting, too, right?
No, no personal reflection on that.
Okay. So, yeah, as Patrick said, this was a survey specifically regarding a potential sales tax extension ballot measure for November, conducted from March 9th through 23rd. So over a, a two-week period about a month ago. Let's see, this is going to be touchy. There we go. So just a little bit, as Patrick mentioned, about the methodology. We interviewed just over 1,200 residents of Wheat Ridge. Over on the left side there, you can see a text message that went out to registered voters within the city, just with the city's logo, you know, friendly branding there. You know, click the link below to take the survey, participate. We really value your opinion. A link to, to take the survey was also shared on the city's website and social media pages as well. And so you see there, the, the overall responses have margin error of 2.72%. And subgroups, as we drill down to specific voter subgroups, will of course have a higher margin error because we're talking about fewer interviews. Also important to note that the results are weighted to be representative of odd-year voting demographics in Wheat Ridge. And have a district map for anyone who's viewing the presentation who isn't familiar with those. And this is the relevant slide when we're talking about how the survey is weighted, right? So if you look, and this is probably hard to see, I, I think you have it in your packets as well. But really, the two differences, two main differences between an odd-year November election and an even year are if you look at the age group column and the party column. So even though those in the 18 to 34 age group by registration are near 30% in Wheat Ridge, and in a presidential year in 2020, they were nearly a quarter of the vote. If you look at a November odd-year, they dropped to 13%. And the flip side of that is those 65 and older, who even though they make up less than a quarter of registration, are nearly 40% of turnout in a November odd-year election. So those are just the kind of things to, to keep in mind. We also have the, the breakout by party as well. And you see that while unaffiliated voters are a plurality of registered voters in the city, and in even years, they, they vote as a plurality. In odd years, actually, the registered Democrats make up a plurality of the vote. So those are just the, the two kind of things to keep in mind as we move forward here. So we wanted to start off just with a, an icebreaker question. Do you think things in Wheat Ridge are heading in the right direction, or do you feel things are off on the wrong track? And 54% of respondents said that the city is headed in the right direction. Nearly a quarter said wrong track and a quarter, we, we caught them at a time where they didn't really have an opinion one way or another on the matter. Not, not a ton of difference when you look at the different demographic groups. They're on the right side. Younger voters are slightly more likely to be in favor or believe the city's headed in the right direction. And also you see District 1 being a little bit of an outlier there with over 60%. Yeah, right. And so we, we wanted to follow that up with a verbatim question. Please explain the reasons why you think the city is heading in the right direction. And, and these are really the two main themes that emerged. And one is that they are happy with the infrastructure improvements that have already occurred or are taking place. Makes sense and, and bodes well for, for the, the rest of the survey here. The other kind of main theme was just an appreciation of the increase of new businesses and development. They view those in a positive light. Comparing those to those who believe the city is off on the wrong track. These are the three main themes. About 38% of those who think the city's going in the, off on the wrong track have the opposite view of growth and development. They, they think that it has been too much or not the right kind of growth and development. I should say, I've just included some kind of representative quotes there underneath each one of these. Also, you have a, a group here who is just still upset with the conditions of streets and infrastructure and believe that more needs to be done, or maybe they're not happy with the pace of the work that's being done. And then third, about a third of those who believe that the city's off on the wrong track, mentioned an increase in crime and growth in the homeless population. And you see that those, they, they actually add up to 100. But there were a lot of people who mentioned more than one of these. They, they don't, they don't, you know, break up quite that neatly. Many people mentioned one or two different themes here. So after we, after that icebreaker, we wanted to, again, just dig into a little bit more about how they're viewing the city. Do you approve or disapprove of the job the city is doing providing services to city residents? And this is a really strong measurement. This is a question that we ask in, in municipal surveys pretty much every time we do one across the country in the state of Colorado. And to be at 75% approving of the job the city's doing is a really a positive and strong measurement, including nearly 1 in 5 who strongly approve. You see the majority there are in that somewhat approved category of 56%. But the, the fact that only 14% are disapproving of the job the city's doing, I think bodes well for a ballot measure in November and speaks well of, of the work that you all are doing. And again, not a, not a ton of differences across the different demographic groups. Starting to get a little bit more into the territory of a ballot measure question. We're asking, do you agree or disagree that the city is fiscally responsible and spends taxpayer money wisely? 17% strongly agree. 46% somewhat agree. And again, that's a, that's a very strong measurement. I would say anything over 50 is solid. So the fact that you all are over 60, you know, the, part of the reason we asked this question is just simply that you want to know if the ballot, if we ask them the ballot measure question and it doesn't look great, you want to know if there's something else lying under the surface, or if it's something specific about the ballot measure question. And, and I think what this shows is that there's nothing really to be concerned about in general with, in, in terms of how the city is, is spending taxpayer money. Okay? Starting to talk about the streets. Obviously, a, a main topic of the potential ballot measure, how would you rate the condition of the major streets in Wheat Ridge? Very few rate them as in excellent condition. You see that the, the vast majority are there in the good to fair category. 34% say good, 43% say fair. And then 1 in 5 say poor. And so that's, you know, a, a lot of the people that we saw earlier who are upset at this point with the, the condition of the roads and wanting more work to be done. You know, that, that's kind of an interesting dynamic because partly it shows that they're not happy. But when you put a ballot measure before them that say, hey, we're going to fix the streets, okay, that sounds good to me, right? So it's kind of a double-edged sword there. And then another related question to what we're eventually going to get to. How important to you, if at all, are continued improvements to sidewalks and bike lanes to enhance pedestrian and bicyclist mobility in Wheat Ridge? 37% say that is essential for them. Another 32% say very important. So clearly, a lot of emphasis being placed on that among these respondents. Only 11% said not at all important. So again, and these are ones, here you really do see some differences across the demographic groups. Voters aged 18 to 44 are far more likely to say this is important to them, as are voters who have lived in Wheat Ridge for less than 10 years compared to those who have lived in the city for more than 10 years. And I think when you think, you know, putting those in context, I think that, that kind of makes sense. So then we asked them to, I know at a council meeting probably about a month ago here that I was watching on Zoom, you all kind of had a conversation about categorizing projects rather than breaking them out specifically. And so that's what we did. And this question, we're asking them to prioritize different types of projects and categorizing them rather than breaking them all up, and ask them to rank them 1 through 4 on these categories. Some interesting results here, I think, you know, not surprising, nearly half ranked number one, just sidewalk and street improvements on primary street corridors. Makes sense. Nearly a quarter, and, and there's two kind of in the middle here, nearly a quarter ranked filling sidewalk gaps as number one, and also drainage and floodplain infrastructure improvements throughout the city as number one, where over half of respondents ranked expansion of the Wheat Ridge Rec Center for additional gym and fitness space as number four. So that one clearly does not rank anywhere near as high as the other three. And really, that, the top one kind of stands out above the rest, the sidewalk and street improvements on primary street corridors. So just something to, to keep in mind as we're looking at these different categories before we get into specifics. Then we wanted to provide a little bit of context to respondents, just to let them know, first of all, that no decision has been made, and that part of the purpose of this survey was to solicit their feedback in order to make a more informed decision about what voters desire. But then also the piece of information that in 2016, a temporary one-half of one-cent sales tax was passed by voters for these specific improvements, and that council is considering a ballot measure for November that would extend that tax to fund additional projects that currently are unfunded. So they have that context going into these questions here. And we said, following our descriptions of each infrastructure project and its approximate cost. So after reading about each, please tell me if you'd be more likely to vote yes and approve a ballot measure, or more likely to vote no and reject it to extend that sales tax. We didn't put a definite timeframe on there. We said for 10 to 20 years. And, and we asked a specific question about that later that you'll see. But we, but these are ranked by the percentage of respondents who said that an inclusion of that project would make them more likely to vote yes on the ballot measure, right? So over 3 and 4 said sidewalk gap improvements throughout the city. I think what's important there, obviously, is it says throughout the city. It's not specific to a region or a different part of the city. It's, it's something that pretty clearly they can see that they'll benefit from. And the same thing goes with drainage and floodplain infrastructure. I mean, the interesting thing about drainage and floodplain infrastructure, having done a couple municipal projects related to that, is that no one gives much thought to it. But if you include it in a survey as something that needs improvement, they just kind of take the expert's word for it and say, oh, yeah, if we need it, sure, it sounds good. You know, better to do it now than when we, you know, before it's too late, kind of thing. And then you see these other ones that are just kind of, kind of be bunched up here, where roughly 2/3 of voters, you know, 38th Avenue from Wadsworth to Harland, 32nd. And again, these are specific projects in specific areas of the city, simply because, you know, when you're going to the ballot, it's important to know, hey, if a voter says, I'm not actually going to benefit from this, so I'm going to vote no, it's important to know that, rather than just having the category where they assume that they'll benefit, but they may not. What's really worth pointing out here is that there are two that are much lower than the others in this list of nine projects. One is 44th Avenue, wider sidewalks from Ward to Kipling. You know, the only thing that I, I think can kind of explain that is there's that specifically mentions wider sidewalks, rather than just improving sidewalks and street improvements. Maybe people think, hey, the sidewalks are fine, they don't need to be wider in that area. But what's really important is that this recreation center expansion, which is really kind of the outlier and the different kind of project compared to, in, or among this group of nine, is, is quite a bit lower than the others. And 41% say if that were included on the ballot, they would actually be more likely to vote no, right? And so I, I only point that out because it is something that is different from the others. You know, it's, some people are really going to latch on to it, you know, this 52% and say, yeah, we, you know, we love the rec center, we want this. But there is some downside there if the campaign becomes too much about a rec center because it's not as popular as these other nine projects. So just something that's worth pointing out. Sorry, this is touchy. Here we go. Okay. And then, after reading them all of those projects, we, we gave them this question. Total cost for all these projects described above to be completed is approximately $82.5 million. So if they were all included in a ballot measure to, again, extend the sales tax for 10 to 20 years, yielding $45 million in the case of 10 years, $75 million in the case of 20 years, would you vote yes and approve it, or would you vote no and reject it? And we see here that over 2/3 of voters would vote yes and approve it. 32% definitely, 36% probably. And then you have just over a quarter who would vote no, 14% probably, and 13% definitely. Not a lot of undecided, so that's good. They're, they're kind of making their decisions here and, and not really leaving it up in the air. You see, clearly, among those who have lived in the city for less than 10 years, they're more positive. Unaffiliated voters and Democrats are more positive. Younger voters are more positive. But, but most of these, with the exception of Republican registered voters, are over 50%. And most of them actually are over 60%. So a really solid measurement. What, you know, kind of the general rule of thumb is that when you're doing pre-election polling, you want to be over 60%, because you can, you can assume some kind of attrition as a campaign happens, especially if there is organized opposition. So the fact that you all are at 68 puts you in, in a really good spot, I think. So the fact that you all are at 68 puts you in, in a really good spot, I think. The next kind of relevant piece that we wanted to know is how long would you feel comfortable extending the current temporary 1/2 of 1 cent sales tax to fund these priority projects? And what's interesting here, I was a little bit surprised by this, is that the most popular response was actually 20 years, not 10 or 15. And I think what explains that is that here, we've already told them that this is going to cost 82.5 million, right? So when they have that piece of information, they say, okay, well, even 75 doesn't quite get you there, but I want to get close to getting all these projects done. That's not to say that, you know, there, there is still roughly a quarter of respondents who said, keep it to 10 and then ask us again in 10 years, let us kind of monitor the progress here. And then of course you do have the 1 in 5 voters that say, they, they don't even want to entertain the, the choice between the 3 and say, I don't want to extend the sales tax. Then we just asked, do you have any final thoughts or opinions? Kind of a catchall place where we let them to have a verbatim response to, to provide any feedback to the city on this possible sales tax extension. You know, nearly 1 in 5 took the opportunity to just say that they support it and they, you know, key that they believe it's a small amount. They don't, they don't view the amount as, you know, excessive and that it's important for the city. Obviously, you also have that 16% who took the chance to say they don't support it, either because it's not the right time, given the economic conditions right now, or they look at the list of projects and say, I, I don't believe those personally, personally benefit me. And then what's interesting is, as I'm sure if you do have time to go through the verbatims, a lot of people took the time to just mention their specific pet projects, specific to them, that they think should be included in this. You know, you see there the example, please consider sidewalk gaps on Pier Street. A lot of that, just, hey, take a look at this, take a look at this. While, while I've got your attention, you know, come, come look at my street, right? Not surprising. Then we have just a couple of survey demographic slides so that you can see how the results are weighted. And again, these, these will line up with that previous spreadsheet that I had shared at the beginning. Again, these are weighted on gender, age, party, and on the council district to match what we expect turn out to be in November. And here's the second set of demographics where you see that. And with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Questions, Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure I'll have more questions, but the one that came to mind is with the rec center. Do you, as you look at those numbers, do you kind of consider that maybe a poison pill that would take the whole thing down? Is that something we should take out or is that, that number kind of acceptable?
You know, given that support is still at 68% with it in there, I, I certainly wouldn't say it's a poison pill. But I would say that it creates a kind of potential landmine for a campaign. I, I've just seen a couple instances in the past where something that's kind of a tangential part of a ballot measure just becomes the topic of conversation. And so, you know, it's, oh, don't vote yes on 1A because we don't need the rec center. And, and it just kind of dominates the conversation. I, no way to predict whether that would happen here. And again, we're still at 68% even including it. But, and you know, it's not like it's, I, I think in the context of all the dollar amounts, it's not like it's eating up a significant portion of the funds. I just thought it was interesting that it's the one that's different from all the others and it was lower than all the others. But no, I, I wouldn't call it a poison pill.
It's interesting because I think when we put it in there, we were like, oh, that's the one that's going to sell everybody on all the, all the stuff. But that's, when I've talked to people too, that was the one that I had a couple people throwback and go, I'm, I'm not for that. So that's interesting. Thank you for the numbers, that's, that's really telling.
Do you think, just on a follow up on that, that the fact that there were, it was sort of 8 questions on sidewalks and streets and, and that type of infrastructure and 1 on the, on the recreation, you know, building, do you think that influenced anybody?
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm sure to the respondents it kind of stuck out. It was obvious that it was different. But I mean, just so you know, those were all randomized. For some people, the rec center came up first. For some people, it was in the middle. For some people, it came up last. So, you know, I do think probably, and, and reading through the verbatims as well, part of it is just not the right kind of rec center expansion. You know, maybe some people want something else to do with aquatics or, or something. And so they say, okay, this, this is not the right time to do that. Let's take care of these streets. And they kind of view it as a secondary, maybe a, a need, not a want, kind of thing.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy?
Thank you. I love data. And this was really amazing. And I was, when I was reading through this over the weekend, it kind of blew my mind that the rec center was so low. And, and also I was surprised that 38th Avenue, Harland to Wadsworth was so high because I feel like I've been fighting an uphill battle on that one for so long. But my question is about the, the timing. When I look at that, what, what my concern, when I'm looking at that, I'm going, okay. So if we go for 10 years, does that mean we lose the 10 year people? So like, if we say 20, we can, we probably are able to keep the 15 year, the people who said, yeah, 15 years is good. We're probably able to keep the 15s in. But are we going too far that we may lose the support of the 10 year supporters?
Yeah, I think that's a valid concern. I mean, I, I think that, that roughly quarter of voters who say, I, I want it to be 10 years, even though, even knowing that 45 million doesn't approach the 82.5 million that we need. You know, I do think that's at, at least worth considering. And that's why I know just from previous conversations with, with staff, we kind of felt like 15 was the sweet spot because it's in between. But what's interesting is it, it actually came up lowest among the 3 options when you present it like this. But, you know, of course, this isn't going to be presented on the ballot. Like you all are going to make a choice and then they're going to vote, right? And so we don't really have all the different permutations of, oh, what if it was 15? Would we lose your support or would we gain support? You know, it, it's hard to say. You know, I, I do think, and again, I'll just go back to hanging our hat on that 68% number, is that you can probably afford to lose at least some of those folks and still be okay if they, if they really are stuck on that 10. I don't think all of those 27% are going to vote no. If you don't go with 10, it's just what they prefer.
Would that be something that we would put, like one of the questions, you know, for, for requested action was, you know, do we, should we conduct an additional polling before a final ballot question? Do you think that trying to narrow down the years would, would be one, would be an appropriate question to add to that?
Sure, yeah. You know, I think, you know, typically when we do a survey kind of at this point in the year, typically it is good to follow it up with another survey once, you know, closer, closer to the ballot language being finalized and, and maybe even actually testing some actual ballot language. And, and that ballot language, you would have made a determination at that point to go with 10 or 15 or 20. And so if those numbers didn't come back looking great, if we went with 20, maybe that would tell you to drop it to 15. Or if we went with 15 and they didn't look great, maybe that would tell you to drop it to 10. You know, it, it's a tricky thing and, and it's obviously hard to tell, you know, exactly how people are going to be feeling about their economic situation from March compared to June and July. I mean, that's what we've seen a lot, especially since COVID, is that kind of the timing does matter. If, you know, if they got bad economic news that week, these numbers can kind of shift a little bit through, you know, through, even if we ask the exact same questions a month later. So I, I definitely think that would, it'd be prudent to have that be kind of part of future polling if that need arises.
And you said we had 1,200 people?
Yes.
Take the survey? What do we usually get our responses on our citizen survey return? 1,200?
We were shooting for 650 in this poll, I think. And we were, I think they were extant, extounded on how many?
Yeah, pleasantly surprised by the engagement for sure. You know, it's, it's one of those things where you just don't know how exciting street improvements are going to be. You know, if we asked a survey that was only about the rec center, I'm sure we would have got a lot of, probably even more response, positive and negative. But yeah, I, I think it's, and you know, a lot of it is just people see the work that's going on with the streets currently, whether they're happy or, or not happy about it. They view it still as an important issue that's facing the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions about the, the time and money. So if you could walk me through, so at 10 years, we're looking at 45 million, but at 20, we have 75. So I'm thinking that if we did the 10 years, we get the 45, and then in another, and then another 10 years, we're only getting 30. But wouldn't the price of some of these projects have gone up? Meaning that, for me, the math doesn't quite work.
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll let staff kind of talk about how you came up with these projections.
Yeah, and these, Nate Ekloff with Piper Sandler, the bonds underwriters, came up with these numbers. So I was just telling how we didn't invite Nate, we should have tonight, he could have talked through that. But I think a lot of it's based on the, the value of time over, over years. So yeah, you would think 20, 10 years gets you 45, 20 should get you double that, but it doesn't. I think it's, that's based on factors of interest rate increases and such. So I don't think if we necessarily did a 1 10 year tranche and then another, and then in 10 years did, do another, I don't, I don't think it would be 30 million the second go around. I think that's what you asked. It wouldn't be the same as based on these numbers. It would be a different value. No, it all depends on what the interest rates are in 10 years. But you're right, the prices of projects I think are not going to probably come down significantly anytime soon, if at all. So there's, there's that value of time and money consideration. But if we can have Nate back, Ekloff, in a future study session to give you more details about all those numbers.
Because that's a concern of mine is that we're considering what we've just been through with the budget and how much stuff has gone up in the past year, that I don't know that I'd want to commit to, to 20 and then find out like, maybe we should just done the 10, then reevaluate and see how much projects are going to cost. And then the other, the other concern I have is that are we disengaging? And maybe this is what Councilmember Hoppy was talking about, disengaging our constituents. If we say 20 years and then you kind of forget about it for 20, 20 years is a long time. Or should we keep them activated and we come back in 10 years and then we say, okay, these are some new projects and we get them activated and interested in the city? That's just kind of my opinion. But I really appreciate all the data. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just say to that, I mean, a, a very valid concern was brought up, do we lose the 10 year people if we go with 20? And I think it's possible. If you go with 10, I think you lose hardly any of the 20 year people, Riley. If someone's comfortable going for 20 years, they're probably going to be, very likely to be comfortable with 10. And then you can go back and ask again in 10 years to your point. So just something to consider.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to echo Ms. Hoppy, I'm a data fangirl. I, I was very surprised by the rec center. But the, the rest of it didn't really surprise me much at all. So just a couple specifics kind of to address the questions in front of us. I do, because of this specific issue, or like, I think the data here is a little bit murky for us to navigate. And so, so the questions in our, in our memo, yes, I think we obviously should continue moving forward discussions about the ballot initiative. And I am, I, I think we would be well served by some more surveying to drill down on this. And I think the thing that I keep balancing is the, like overwhelmingly strong support for the projects we brought forward, with the exception of the last 2, is my concern is we don't come forward with something that addresses everything but those 2, that we're going to lose people. Because to me, you know, the polling and surveying is the first step in, in the ballot initiative campaign. And we have now floated this in front of 1,200 people. And I think what we heard is that there's a huge appetite. So I think, I think, you know, moving forward is to look at what's our tolerance to, to add the outliers. But I'm really nervous about the 10 year version because that would be cutting things from the list that we heard really strongly from our constituents that they want to see moving forward. And that they actually called like essential or critical, I forgot. So, so that feels, that feels like something we need to kind of pay attention to and maybe better understand kind of where that, that tolerance falls, falls within that. So, and yeah, I think the rest of it was, was pretty straightforward. And polling is good. So I, I do, I do think another round of polling at some point after we kind of figure out what the packages look like so we can present to them specific, specific packages. I am curious with the rec center. I know we all sat in the, in the retreat and we're like, oh, the rec center seems like a no brainer. What, what from Parks and Rec is that, like, what, what have they identified? I mean, we, we were identifying it, but like, what, what are we hearing from Karen? Or is there any like long-term planning where that's been specifically like called out and supported in other places?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. They were starting to put together a program to start surveying the rec center users, patrons, many who are not Wheat Ridge voters, but trying to get an idea. But I don't think it's any, honestly, any of the master plans. You know, it's just, I think it's been in discussions for years. We, we talked about it in 2008 and I can't remember, went on the ballot, didn't, didn't pass back then. But I don't think it's in any of their, their long-term planning documents that there's an expansion. I mean, this rec center was constructed to be expanded. So when it was built almost 25 years ago, it was, it was, the thought at that point was, let's build it so it could be expanded at some point.
Okay. All right, well, for, I guess my only other comment on requested action, action then, is are we looking for discussion tonight to decide if we're going to cut any of the projects from consideration? Or are we going to bring this back to another study session to kind of put together some packages that can then go back out for surveying? Like Patrick, what's your, what's your guidance in terms of moving forward on that?
Yeah, good question. If, I mean, obviously if there is a desire tonight to, to start cutting projects, if you think you heard enough information, I, I just don't think we've heard enough information, in my opinion, from this survey to potentially start cutting. But that is an option for you tonight. It's like, yeah, let's, let's just cut, cut it now and, and move forward on these other projects, dig deeper. My concern is these values, construction costs that we put to these projects are very, very, very high level. And I think once we start digging deeper, we're hiring consultants to help us with those and figure out what the true numbers are. The numbers are going to go quite, quite a bit higher. So I'm not sure if we're going to build, fit all these into 20 year bond package anyway. So I, I'm hoping to get direction tonight to, if you want to continue moving forward with all of these, we're going to, that would be great. And then we're going to dig deeper and try to get better pricing on them and then come back to another study session. That might give you more information about, well, we can't even fit them into a 20 year and we don't want to go 20 years, we're going to go 15 years. So what can we fit in, in, into that dollar amount?
That sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. How many, how many issues are, are you thinking that you want to have on the ballot together? 4, like before in 2016 or whatever?
It'd be 1 question. And there's, these are all the projects that you can consider that, that we've been talking about at retreat and that were on the survey. So you could include all these projects on the, on the ballot or you could include 4 or 5 or 6?
I think all of them was too much. That's too much.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for. What direction on that?
But also, when you were starting to, you were identifying what the projects were. Okay, at the very beginning, it was like sidewalks, bike lanes, by schools, whatever. Then the fourth one was 32nd Avenue between Kipling and Wadsworth. There is a school there. So that one could be included also with the first one that you had up there. It's Wheat Ridge High School.
Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I would be interested in seeing what kind of value engineering we would have to do for 20 years versus 10 years. I think that there seems to be more of an appetite for 10 years as opposed to 20. However, I think that at a later time, there would be a lot more variables to consider. But as we're seeing with the 2018 bond project with Jefferson County, we're this far out. And unfortunately, even though the amount is the same that's going to be dedicated to Wheat Ridge High School, it just doesn't go as far as what it's covering because of the costs. And so I think we're going to really start to run into those kinds of issues. As for a specific ballot initiative, I'd be concerned about pigeonholing ourselves into we're going to cover these specific projects and then us not have enough money to do so. I think we ran into that problem, you know, with Wadsworth specifically and, and TOD site and having to kind of shift funds from Ward Station to, to Wadsworth. and having to kind of shift funds from Ward Station to Wadsworth. And so I think, you know, it's, I'm not sure that we would necessarily want to outline specific projects on the ballot initiative. And so I'm willing to hear people's feedback on that as well. I unfortunately am not all that surprised about the REC Center expansion. I think having the LAP pool and the pool for the kids closed and, you know, this ongoing issue with lifeguards and having to significantly cut some of our programming, particularly that would cater towards kids and families, just because of staffing issues. You know, I think that that's really at the forefront of our community's mind. I've had many parents at PTA and otherwise remark about some of the issues that the REC Center has been, been having. And they recognize that it's, you know, regional in nature, but have, have mentioned, you know, going to Golden or Arvada just because of the more robust programming that's offered, particularly with, for children. And so at this point in time, I mean, I feel as if there's enough data to say that we could probably take that off of the option list. And then, you know, the infrastructure improvements as far as sidewalks seems to be a really big issue. And then just reading through their survey, of course, you know, the homelessness issue and everything that comes along with, with the trash and the crime and whatnot is clearly top of mind in our community. And I think we've done a really good job at trying to address that. But when we have the perception in the community that we're not doing enough about certain things, they kind of feel like it's not a good use of our tax revenue for other, for other things. So I don't know how we address like that kind of mentality in the community. But just having read through that, like the actual survey answers, I mean, that was probably number one on, in the answers. So I agree with Councilmember Hoppy in regards to like the ten years. And I think we want to capture as many people as possible. So if we want to put this back out to a survey with broader questions, then I think that that might be beneficial as well. Thank you.
Counselor Nosterbeck.
I just wanted to chime in that I just really support the idea of us taking this initial look and hearing from folks that they're into this idea. I mean, I spend a lot of time in my day job in this type of polling data. And anything that's coming in at sixty-eight percent is really a big deal. And I think that that should be one of the major takeaways that we, we take from this is that we have, we have the community behind us in exploring that. And then to what you were talking about, Councilmember Hulteen and Patrick, that the next step is just really whittling down into these projects. Because, you know, I took the survey and I also helped figure out what these questions were going to be. But when I'm reading them up here and participating, and seeing how people might have thought about them, I think we do need to provide a little bit more direction. And we probably, as a council, need to have more of that, too. So just, I'm, I'm in support of some of the conversations that everybody's having tonight. And I just wanted to chime in so you knew I was here. And I'm sorry I was late.
Thank you, Counselor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. On the Weary Ridge REC Center, remind me, how specific were the questions? Was it just in general of?
Just that expansion of the REC Center include a second gym and more facility space for fitness-type classes. We tried to stay away from the pool because it probably wouldn't include any aquatics.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, if you polled people and you said, specifically the REC Center, you said, here's five options or something like, which one would you want the most? And then you got consensus. And if that was the consensus, and then you polled them, would the REC Center be higher than what was asked? So that's my, that's my first question. And then the other question is, is there, and I don't know enough about the polling, but I feel like we have a lot of, we've now gotten this, let's talk Weary Ridge, and we have a lot of, I guess, email addresses. Is there a reason why we couldn't leverage that or that skew the polling? Because there's thousands upon thousands. And I, I would appreciate some more input from citizens on this to give me a clearer picture. And I'm just wondering, like, could we use that or does that skew the results? Because it's maybe not as random.
Sure. You know, I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, just, just to give you a sense of how many text messages we did send out. So you see there about twenty-six thousand registered voters in Weary Ridge. And, you know, for our purposes of trying to determine the success rate of a ballot measure, we do only want to talk to voters, right? Like, if someone's not registered to vote, you know, their opinion certainly carries less weight than someone who is on this kind of, specifically this kind of survey. So we, we texted, I think it was about, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve thousand five hundred voters, just drawn from a list of registered voters that we get from the county where people provide their cell phone number when they register to vote. And, but, but for exactly, exactly to your point and for exactly that reason is why we did include it, you know, on the city website and on social media pages. And it may, did it go out in an email to that email list that he's, yeah, that's what I thought. So, so I don't know whether it was a communication specifically about the survey, but it was certainly included in an email. And you all can speak to that.
Yeah, it was sent to all of our registered folks in, on What's Up, Weary Ridge. Yep.
And, and that honestly probably explains why we were, you know, very pleasantly surprised by the response rate is because, you know, to get twelve hundred responses is, is a pretty significant and substantial response rate, so.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think if we're going out to polling, we need to be more specific about what we're looking at. And so what that means is that we need to have a discussion about what we think we want to be on that. And when I look at these projects and then also consider, like, I will tell you that I was really surprised that Thirty-eighth Avenue, Youngfield to Kipling was so low. But I also know we did an entire study on that area and there was a lot of support on that. So for me, and it wasn't that I wanted to go with ten years, I was just wondering if we went with twenty, would we lose the ten years? But for me, I think that we should look specifically for a fifteen-year. And, and another note about like not having enough money for Wadsworth, we totally knew when we put that ballot measure out that that wasn't going to be enough money. And we had other avenues that we were going to like follow up to try to get more, get money from for that. And so, you know, that was, you know, we, we went into that eyes wide open, that we were going to have to do some work in other places to get that money. So for me, this is, this is what I think we should do some, some more polling on is, is what's the appetite for fifteen years? And I think that we drop the Youngfield sidewalk, trail and pedestrian bridge at six million. I think we drop the bottom, or, and then we drop the REC Center. And we keep the, even though the Forty-fourth Avenue wider sidewalks, Ward to Kipling, that seems pretty non-holistic if we just do the, the Ward to Kipling pedestrian crossings and everything for two point five. Like, I, I think that that shouldn't have been broken out. I think those probably should have stayed together because it treats that street holistically. And the Thirty-eighth Avenue, Youngfield to Kipling and Thirty-eighth Avenue, Wadsworth to Harland also treats that street more holistically, right? It's a project. And then the Thirty-second, Kipling to Wadsworth, our gateway drainage project and the, and the sidewalk gaps. And so that, that gets us to sixty-one point five, which is more than the sixty we'd get for fifteen. However, there's also safe routes to schools where we could get some money for some of the, like, the sidewalk work on Thirty-second Avenue near the high school. Safe route to schools where we can do some, you know, filling in some of those sidewalk gaps. So if we have to be able to, you know, move some money to some different places. And, and what, the only thing we're losing is the Youngfield sidewalk trail and the REC Center. Am I missing something else, Hallie? Those are the only two that we would be dropping. And, and so that's my suggestion.
Counselor Stites.
I agree with you on all except for the Forty-fourth Avenue sidewalk widening. I think we should drop that and stay at about fifteen years and definitely keep the gaps and everything else. But I agree on, still not sure on the REC Center because I think if it was explained out a little bit differently. But I think if we're going to drop the bottoms, that Forty-fourth Avenue sidewalk widening is one that we should drop. And then the, I'm fine dropping the Youngfield trail as well and focusing on fifteen years and kind of going forward with the projects that we have left and doing some more polling on those to see what the appetite is for, for that.
Let me ask a couple of questions. How long was our last bond project for? Twelve years and we finished in about ten?
Eight, we think we'll be, we think we'll raise the thirty-eight and a half million in eight years.
Eight years? Okay. How big was the sidewalk going to increase on Forty-fourth Avenue? Went from four to five or four to eight or?
Lauren.
I don't, to the question of refining these cost estimates, I'm not exactly sure what the assumption is. I mean, it's an attached sidewalk right now in that it's just a two-foot buffer. And the feedback we got through the planning process is that it's not comfortable. So I think it's either detached or like ten feet-
Okay, so it's sort of more of a, more of a-
More of a trail.
A tree lawn and a trail or a, okay. Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. So I have straight general concurrence. So let's see here. So remind me, does anyone remember, am I remembering correctly that we believe we will be awarded through Dr. Cog some funds for the Youngfield project?
That one did not make the list, no. It's, it's on the waitlist. So if there's, I think if there's, another project falls off, it didn't score high enough, our other two projects did, but that one did not. But it's still on the waitlist.
It's on the waitlist, yes.
Okay. So I guess my mindset is I, I feel like we've got one more round of polling that we can take advantage of. And I feel like we're, right now is the question of do we try and better understand the information we just got, like, try and understand what could we get with the fifteen-year bond? Who would we lose if we cut these projects? Like, we could kind of parse that a little bit. Or we could make some decisions as council to, to narrow and focus it and then use that second round of polling to better understand messaging and if there are any key edges to it. And I guess I feel like the latter polling would serve us, given the clarity that we got in this polling around just strong support. I feel like, I mean, I don't want to say we can't go wrong because we certainly could. But I feel like we actually have a lot of, our margins are phenomenal. I'm with Val, like, in this, in this world, anything over sixty at this point is exciting. So I, I agree. I, I hate to say this, but I'm okay letting go of the widening of the Forty-fourth Avenue sidewalks. We have so many places with zero sidewalks. And to spend that much money to make what is actually pretty okay sidewalks better just doesn't feel like the right, right alignment. And the REC Center, I am, I would like to get a little bit better understanding, but I'm okay with letting it go if we don't have strong support for it. And, and then I'd rather use our next round of polling to better understand sort of more nuanced messaging. And then like how critic, how much do we lose if we go with fifteen? So anyway, that's just my feedback. And to have staff bring back a little bit better cost estimate to see if we need to value engineer anything else out before we go out for more, more polling. Thanks.
Ryan, what are you thinking on what you're hearing on potential second round of polling based on your experience?
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I think it's, you know, we kind of by necessity phrased it as ten to twenty years in this one, just to kind of get a general sense. I do think on the second round of polling, it would be sensible to pick one, test it, and then after testing it, say, okay, what if we changed it to twenty? And then you can actually see where that cliff is and you can actually see if most people stick with you or if more people drop off. And then honestly, we can also say, what if it was ten? Do we gain more people or does it just kind of stay stagnant? Definitely, I think that that's the right thing to do. You know, I, I think anytime you're talking about a second round of polling, it's just, it's helpful because it's, okay, we heard you, we're, we're coming back, we're, we did our, kind of our due diligence, we cut a few projects, now what do you think? Just kind of helps to refine that ballot language a little bit. Again, I think a second round of polling would be far more critical if we were in like fifty-two, fifty-five percent. And the fact that we're at sixty-eight percent, to me, means that you could just go forward and say, okay, here we go, we're going with it without a second round of polling. But I do think a second round of polling would really help you all get a better sense of where those, like you said, where the edges and support are, where it falls off. And, you know, planning that for June, let's say a couple months of, of, you know, just time to pass and see where this thing lands in June as we get a little closer, would still give you time to make any adjustments before you need to write the final ballot language and make those concrete determinations, so.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What would be the cost associated with a second round of polling?
It would depend on what the script was, how long it was. It, you know, if it was something more or less similar to this, we'd be looking at somewhere around ten to twelve thousand for the cost of that poll.
And how much more clarity do you really think that we would receive from a second round of polling? Like, would it be cost effective? Would it be?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it would help you just get a better sense. Again, like I said, since we're at sixty-eight, do you absolutely need a second round of polling? Not necessarily. But it would, it would help you get a better sense of, okay, we've, we've right-sized it, we've even put some more figures behind it, to your point, kind of nailed down the figures a little bit more to see what difference that makes. And it, it would give you a more solid look at what to expect in November. But, but I wouldn't anticipate dramatically different results from this survey. I guess that's how I'd answer your question.
Do you think we'd be able to get the more accurate cost estimates on the work between now and when we would poll again?
Yeah, we're already working on that. And, yeah, we were waiting for it tonight to see if we could cut the list down and really focus on a shorter list. We're more than willing to keep the full list still and get more cost estimates. But, you know, they're not going to be fully engineered numbers, of course. They're still going to be pretty high level.
I mean, I'll tell you, for me, I think the, sort of the Thirty-eighth from Wadsworth to Harland is a, is a pretty key project that we've sort of deferred along the line would be something to move forward with. Once again, I sort of like the REC Center, but if it doesn't poll well and, you know, maybe something to not include. Additional discussion? Senator Hoppy.
Senator? Whoa!
Thank you.
Was on the tip of my-
I like policy, not politics. I will never be a senator. I guess, I guess, so I guess what I, I think that we need to decide as a body is where, what are we going to do? Are we, are we going to ask for the polling at fifteen and are we dropping the bottom two? Or are we going to kind of patchwork what's in here? And so, because, again, if we're going out to poll again, we want to make sure that we're asking the question that we want to hear the answer to, not just asking the same question again.
Counselor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd be in support of the fifteen and dropping the two, bottom two.
Counselor Hoppy, I mean, Hulteen.
What's her face? I guess, I feel like I'd like the better fleshed-out numbers and then to make a decision. Because we, I'm okay with dropping Forty-fourth Avenue sidewalk widening. But, I mean, I think what, what I heard is that we could find out that there's some, some possibly significant shifts in the numbers, especially when they're considered across all projects. So I think before going back out to polling, I think better numbers would be helpful. And we might find out then that, that this, this what looks like a straightforward fifteen-year combination to us actually is going to require taking another project off. And that might inform the type of polling we do. So to me, I feel like the next step would first have to bring back better numbers on the projects that we have so that the idea that feels good on a fifteen-year package right now, the numbers are still in line with that. And then- And then if they aren't, then we can have a discussion about do we need to poll to better understand what else to cut? Or are we comfortable making another cut as a body at that point? So, and then, and then make a surveying decision after we have the numbers. So that's, that's my comfort zone.
Counselor Hoppe.
I just have a question about timing. You know, this, this is about a six-week project, the polling and bringing it back and getting it.
Probably to get it written and, yep. It went, went really quickly.
Yeah, I mean, it was probably.
Written out and back, like how do, how long to get us a completed project?
So really, I would say the average project is about a month, right? So it's about a week to get the questions right and get them where everyone wants them. It's, it's in the field for two weeks and then it's about a week to compile the data. So six weeks would be on the high end, looking at roughly about a month.
And then where, I mean, where is staff at, at, you know, trying to get some of these numbers dialed in a little bit, a little bit better? I mean, is, is that, timing-wise, would that work also? You know, I just know that we, we can end up in a, in a runoff to the deadline. We still need time to be able to take it out to our community and get community support before it hits the ballot, so.
Yeah, if we want to shoot for a June, it's already, geez, what is it, April?
It's first of April.
First of April. We got numbers by the end of April. Yeah, I think we could have numbers before, before we went to a June poll. Better numbers.
So, but, so that's what I'm asking, like better numbers by the end of April and then we spend May polling and then?
I think we go out in June.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not really limited on the time. We could start it in May if you want. You know, typically, kind of the, the two times where you don't want to do a ton of polling is between Thanksgiving and Christmas and then May. May's not a great month because a lot with, you know, school's ending, a lot of people.
May is mayhem, that's what I call it.
So that, that's why throughout June, you know, it, and honestly, if we, if we wanted to really just shoot for the moon and get a lot of feedback, we could leave the survey open for a month instead of two weeks. I mean, that, that's, that's another option that's on the table. We're flexible on that for us.
I think we got a good number of, a good amount of feedback. I'm just concerned about like making sure that we can, we'll be able to put together the, the product, that we support this bond and be able to be out in the community, talking to people about it and having our community events, like before it like hits the ballot. So I just want to make sure that we'll have that, that time. So if you think that we have the time to do that, then I'll support waiting until we get better numbers. If not, then I'd rather roll out with, with what we have.
And Maria's watching and she just texted me, she's, she's still getting quotes. She thinks early to mid-May, we should have some good numbers, so.
We can have the questions written though, the survey, most of the survey drafted. That's what kind of took most of the back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, we can clearly just have links and plug in the numbers when we have them, yeah.
Ryan, we have a lot of.
And then schedule-wise, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
It's schedule-wise for then, for it to come back to a study session or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ryan, we have a lot of construction going on in town. Do you think that influences one way or the other, the respondents?
Yeah, oh, it certainly does. I mean, I would say on the verbatim responses, more among the negative, you know, the, the people who have a negative view of, of the city being off on the wrong track, a lot of folks say, oh, it's because, you know, construction's not going at the pace that they expected it to or. But, but yeah, I, I think, I think that it kind of plays both ways as well. Some people are happy that the construction's going on because they, they see the improvements being made. You know, obviously, it never happens as quickly as people would like it to. You can't just snap your finger, right? But no, I, I think, I, I think without question, it, it does affect how people view it because we're asking about the same exact kind of stuff in this survey, so.
Well, I was going to go to Counselor Nosler Beck. Is that where you was on?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I saw the hand waving.
Thanks, you all have my back, appreciate it. The, I, I just was going to throw out that I think we're all kind of getting to the same, the same spot on this. And I don't, I don't know if I'm asking for consensus right now, I don't think, I've never done that before. But, okay, I'm going to give it a shot, I'm going to ask for consensus. That we take the feedback from this initial survey and really whittle down those, those questions so that we have those framed up and ready to go, eliminate the bottom two. And then asking for a consensus for us to move forward with another round of going out to the community and asking them some questions with more specific information about what funding is actually needed for these projects into some more detail. And then, I guess, with the goal of us putting this out and starting to work on it in Ju-, in July. With 15 years as the, over the lasting time for the sales increase and then I already talked about the two questions coming off of the polling.
Sure hands?
Just clarification, so, but we wouldn't be doing polling until members come back to us again? Okay, so, okay.
Okay, looks like we have consensus on that. Any other?
No, that's great, thank you so much.
Ryan, thanks for a great report, we appreciate it.
Thanks for your time, yep.
Okay, we've been at this two hours, we want to continue on to item number four. Or actually, we're on item number three. Why don't we take?
I just want to say yes to item three, will? Consensus?
Let's take about a five-minute break. We'll be back at half past. Thank you. We will now go to our gen, item number three. This is a mixed-use code update. And Ms. Goff.
Thank you. I, I won't, I'll just let Lauren introduce us so we don't waste time. Lauren?
Yes, we will go efficiently. So we were before you, Scott presented before you in February. And some of you weren't here, but those of you that were will recall that we threw a lot of different topics. And the first topic that night was updates to our mixed-use code. And we had described very high level that it was going to be a lot of clarity and sort of modernization, not a lot of policy changes. And the direction we got for that topic was to please come back with a little more detail about what we were specifically planning to change. So hopefully that's what you got out of the memo that Scott drafted tonight, organized again sort of by topic. Instead of summarizing the proposed change for each individual topic in the interest of time, we will go through the memo in order, but maybe let you do more talking than us. Scott did all the heavy lifting here, so I'm going to stop talking and turn it over to him.
Thanks, Lauren. Yeah, just to summarize for those that weren't here in February. We adopted the mixed-use code in 2010 and since 2010, we really haven't done a comprehensive look at the code in whole. We've kind of adopted things here and there, but we haven't really looked at the entire ordinance since then. And the proposed code amendment doesn't really change any development standards apart from adding some standards, which I'll get into in just a minute. The recommended ordinance is really seeking to modernize the code. 13 years is a long time to go without reviewing a section of code. And the recommended ordinance is really based on not only updated best practices, but also lessons learned from implementing it. We've had a lot of projects come in under the mixed-use code and we feel like this is the right time to just get it all done in one go and, and do a lot of updates here and there throughout the code. So the proposed regulations and changes are based on council's consensus from last meeting to come back at a study session. There is a lot more detail in there. It is seven pages long, I'm not going to read through every bullet point. But I do want to give a general overview and feel free to interrupt me at any time or we can just have questions at the end, whatever works for you. So I'll get right into it. The proposed ordinance framework is really, consists of a lot of different sections of the mixed-use code, which is Article 11. The first and probably the most important is adding buildings for access, standards for accessory buildings. The original mixed-use code did not include any regulations for accessory buildings, including garages, sheds, and now ADUs. That was really an oversight and we need to add those regulations into the code. We currently have an adopted policy from 2012 to kind of get around that. We need a code basis. It's, it's just important to go ahead and add it into the code. But generally, what we're recommending would follow what's already in the memo and, sorry, in the policy and, and just kind of go along with that. Adding some charter height and density cross-references, these are often missed by applicants who think that they can build denser and taller than the code or the charter allows. Building placement and orientation standards, we just need to update these to be kind of in line with the intent of the code, particularly the mixed-use TOD area. And also clarify in some instances that the director gets to decide, not the applicant, in terms of how site design works. There are still developers that are attempting to incorporate slot home style buildings in designs and we need a little bit more negotiation power in the code. Revising some vertical screening requirements as well. This is really in the weeds, but there's a lot of these rooftop air conditioners that our code requires us to screen. But the code is really vague and we've noticed that that has actually been a really challenging section to get people to administer or even find. And so just providing some more clarity within the code. Same with fencing, I believe, actually that's what I'm talking about now as well. So those two sections need to be updated. Building materials, this is a really long section, but we're intending to essentially allow for more classic brick buildings where we don't now. Our code actually requires brick buildings to kind of be broken up with different materials and we'd like to be able to kind of waive that requirement if someone wants to go above and beyond and build a really nice brick building. We also need to add siding to the code, that was really more of an oversight than anything. It's permitted in other sections, but it's completely silent and mixed-use. Adding some more standards for fuel canopies, more standards for synthetic brick. Modifying transparency requirements to be consistent with other sections in the code. And, oh yeah, there's the rooftop screening, we just need it to be more user-friendly. Height bonuses section is really talking about clarifying the existing code. We're not actually proposing any changes, but it's a run-on paragraph. I think it's, should be four sentences and it's one, it's pretty confusing. Bicycle parking requirements, this is one we did talk about last time a little bit more at length. Our bicycle parking and storage requirements are really low compared to surrounding communities and really outdated. They don't account for indoor or secure bike parking for apartment buildings. They don't really provide any standards as to the number or location other than it's pretty vague. And so we're recommending increasing that requirement. Pretty small ask, but something to kind of bring us in line with surrounding communities. Open space requirements, there's just some outdated language in there that we need to update, clarify that walking paths can count towards open space. Clarifying minimum plant sizes, talking about private yards. And one of the topics we did talk about last time was artificial turf. We do have an adopted policy on artificial turf, it is prohibited in the city. We're not, as part of this code amendment, recommending any changes to single-unit homes or residential areas. We're really talking about kind of common areas in mixed-use higher-density development, allowing artificial turf. common areas in mixed-use higher-density development, allowing artificial turf in some circumstances. We do have an adopted administrative policy that I attached that talks about artificial turf for things like seating on patios and also for athletic fields. We know that a lot of schools actually desire artificial turf in that circumstance, and we're proposing to not only incorporate that into the code, but expand it slightly. Permitted uses, I think, is the last big one. There's just some uses that we've talked about needing to be included or changed. One of those is just updating some definitions, allowing for things like maker spaces and more personal services. One of the things we did talk about was food truck courts, and I can get into that. I'm sure people have questions. But it's really a permanent building with services that then would allow several food trucks on one property. And last but not least, we need to clarify drive-through and gas station separation requirements. So with that, any questions? Thanks. Almost five minutes.
Okay, Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As I read through all these, I support all of them. I also support the ones where you're like, "Not right now, but later," which isn't okay, like considering the mixed-use industrial flex zones and zone districts more broadly. One question I have, though, is to clarify, so it says, "Clarify how private fenced yards do or don't count towards open space percentages." And you say, "While fenced yards are considered open space, they should not be considered publicly accessible usable space, and the code basis would be helpful in negotiations with developers." So here's my question. If there are private fenced yards, then does the publicly accessible open space requirement become lower, knowing that you can access green space independently from your own unit?
I don't think it would be intended to waive the code requirement that requires some public gathering space in these larger developments. So it's, I guess, not one or the other, it's both.
So, private yard, you still have to have the same size of public space as an apartment complex with no private yards?
And the open space requirement in mixed use is really low. It's 10% or 15%, depending on if it's a mixed-use or a single-use development. And so what we're finding is, particularly, I think, in some of our townhome projects, they're saying, "Well, I have a yard. I don't need to do anything else for the rest of the project." And that has been a challenging conversation. So what we'd like to clarify is, you're welcome to have us, you're welcome to choose how you want to distinguish the private and public realm, but you still have a 15% open space requirement. We're finding that anything really lower than that, you don't get a good functional space.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's actually fun to read this stuff, to kind of flush through, especially when we know what's working and what isn't. I appreciate seeing that, you know, food truck flexibility seems like something that wasn't on the horizon once it was first adopted. And then also just recognizing that community gardens are really part of who we are. The Yaro Gardens, or Yukon Court, or whatever it's called, that's near my house. They recently put up a bunch of community gardens there, and we'd love to encourage that. I'm gonna push back a little bit on the not requiring indoor parking. A lot of our mixed-use zones are on our transit lines, and we are, you know, through federal, state, and regional policy, releasing a push to encourage the density on our transit lines with the idea that the occupancy would be less card-dependent. And we're seeing an increased adoption of e-bikes. And just last Friday, the governor proposed, legislature introduced, proposed e-bike tax rebates for 10 years. So I think, I think require, I mean, we're seeing most of our higher-density, like apartments and stuff, coming in there. So I'd like us to consider actually requiring indoor parking with, with charging facilities for, for e-bikes, or at least the parking part. Because if people are buying bikes and started cars, they're typically bikes they want to make sure are kept safe. So with that in mind, what would be some guidelines that would feel reasonable to consider around requiring indoor bike storage?
That's a really good point. I think the intent with all these amendments is to be like a really quick amendment, and for things like that, I think that would probably require additional research. And I wouldn't necessarily want to hold up some of these things that we know need to happen pretty fast to do something like that. That said, the ones that I've seen that cities that do require indoor parking, it's kind of based on the size of the building or number of units. And it's usually, you know, things on the first floor, it has to be accessible. Wheat Ridge, Arvada, Lakewood, none of their, kind of our peer cities have those requirements, so we'd be looking to more of a Denver to model it after if we chose to go that route. But yeah, I don't, I don't think we just have enough research on that, at least that I did.
So would be another approach would be for us to maybe take a look at bike parking and EV charging as a standalone thing to look across? Okay. All right, well then, I am okay with this, and I will be seeking to see if I can get some support to take a look at our bike storage and our EV charging across the zoning code. Thanks.
Counselor Rome?
So what, what is the definition of a food truck court? I mean, I have in my mind two different areas that are very close to each other on 38th. One is kind of built, and one is future, potentially built, but not necessarily a food court, but, but a parking area. You know, like the green, we're intending that to be an area where food trucks could pull up. Is that a court? I mean, it's designed, it's, the intent is to have food trucks. If you could define that.
Yes, so there's a distinction between mobile food sales, where someone comes in for an afternoon, sells, and then leaves. Even if there's a dedicated pad, that's not a food truck court. A food truck court would be a permanent building with restrooms, bar, indoor seating, something like that, and then has the ability to have either permanent or semi-permanent food trucks around it, or, you know, people come and go. But there is a permanent feature that's dedicated, like a bar building or a restroom building on-site. And the site, it's private property, it's dedicated specifically to that use. So it's a primary use of the property instead of an accessory or temporary use.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion? Okay. Would it be more efficient to see what in here is not approved by council on consensus? And was there anything that anyone would like to pull out of this list before we, let me look at a consensus to approve the memo as presented then? Getting late, getting easy, okay. All right. Well, Scott, that was, that was a good, good presentation.
Thanks, everyone. Does the EV charging include for vehicles or just indoor bikes? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Scott.
Expediently done.
Oh, Judy's got a question here.
Judy, yeah?
Okay, so we talked about the e-bikes and everything, and we don't know where that's going to go in the future and all that. Are they going to be riding on the road?
Yeah, so it's actually state law that a bike is a vehicle and is allowed to ride on the road.
So are they going to be licensed?
Nope.
Why?
They're bikes.
They're riding on the road?
Yeah.
And they're motorized?
Yeah, well, this isn't a conversation to have here.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. We're going to choo, we're going to turn now to item number four. This is a discussion of facial recognition technology.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Chief Murtha here. I'll let him introduce our guest. He's going to do the presentation, I believe?
Yep.
Yep, I'll let Chief start.
Before I introduce our brain trust behind me there, I just wanted to make a few comments on facial recognition software. The reason this comes before you is because of a Senate Bill 22113, which paused our facial recognition program. In 2018, the Wheat Ridge Police Department did have a facial recognition program, and that was paused in 2020 as a result of input from, from our legislature. So I know facial recognition software can conjure up a lot of images of Big Brother and what's going on. I think what we'll find is the guidelines and the reporting and training that's required under the Senate bill have greatly reduced a lot of the angst around facial recognition. The policy's designed to ensure community acceptable uses, I think. Primarily, this tool is, is an investigative tool for crimes, for missing persons, for deceased persons that are, were unable to identify. There's no real-time monitoring, and much of uses for the long-term use are restricted and require a court order. So in other words, if you're monitoring for somebody in particular, you would have to go and get a court order. This technology's obviously widely used in airports, at national special security events around the country, like the Super Bowl, like presidential addresses and that sort of thing. That being said, behind me is Beth Daniel. I don't know if many of you have met Beth. Beth is our crime analyst, which is a misnomer. Beth does a lot of work in our investigations. She works on a lot of high-profile crimes in Wheat Ridge, and doesn't just present us with stats and statistical data and analysis, but provides a lot of support to our investigators. That being said, she's prepared what I think will be a pretty quick PowerPoint to get you up to speed. We're not required under the law to, to do anything other than to present this to council, but obviously, we'd like your feedback, and, and we'd like your position on facial recognition software. So that's why we're here before you tonight.
Okay. Beth?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Chief. Thanks for having us. Like Chief Murtha said, just, just talked to you a little bit about facial recognition, what it's used for, what it's not used for. A little bit about Senate Bill and some of the agency requirements that the bill actually dictates. So what facial recognition is, like Chief Murtha said, it's a tool in a, in a large toolbox that we have upstairs, you know, among a hundred other programs that we can use to try to help us investigate a case, identify people, associates, things like that. Facial recognition is a very useful tool. But at that, it, it only is a lead. That's all it does. It's certainly nothing more than that, and we'll kind of, we'll kind of go through that. But it is, it is something very akin to, you know, CLEAR, the Thomson Reuters we have CLEAR, which provides access for law enforcement to public information. So cellphone mailing addresses, vehicle registrations, things like that. It's very similar to that. So we can look up and see who's associated with an address. And all that does is give us some leads of who has been associated with an address. It doesn't say this is the person you're looking for. So facial recognition is very similar in that respect. Give you one example of many that we had over the two years that we were able to use facial recognition here. So we had, I don't know, some of you will probably remember it, back in January of 2019, at the Dollar Tree, a lady who was 88 years old at the time, was walking along the sidewalk, getting ready to walk into the store, and somebody who had been on surveillance video had been waiting around the entrance in and outside of the store for quite some time. He saw her coming. She had her purse on her shoulder. He grabbed her purse and shoved her down and took off with her purse. The result of him shoving her down resulted in serious bodily injury to her, and, and a substantial risk for death. He was described as a six-foot-tall male, wearing a black Raiders jacket and red shoes. And we could see him on the video surveillance. The video surveillance at that store wasn't super great, but somebody used her credit card within a couple of hours at a convenience store in Aurora. We were able to get that surveillance video, which was fantastic. And we took a screenshot of that, gentleman who had used her credit card, by the way, wearing a black Raiders jacket and red shoes, and ran that through facial recognition software that we had at the time. The way that the software works is that it comes up with a bunch of different people, right? It doesn't come up and say, "This is your person." It, I have never seen it come up and say, "This is 100% accuracy, this is your person." It will do percentage points that it thinks, but it does not come up with one person, it comes up with a whole bunch that it gives you. So we looked through those and found somebody who, to us, looked very similar, basing it on the height, the weight, the facial features, ears, hairline, things like that, smile, lips, eyebrows. So we just take that with a little bit of further investigation. One of the things was that the conico that what her credit card was used at was right near this guy's house who we had identified. Completely separate, we had sent out a law enforcement-only bulletin to the metro area with his picture, not including the facial recognition. This was pre-facial recognition. And his, the same guy's probation officer ended up calling our detective and saying, "That's so-and-so." When we looked further into him, he was also the suspect in a robbery in Aurora a couple hours prior to ours, except that robbery was of an old roommate that he had known for a couple of years, so somebody that knew him very well. So our detectives went out, talked to her. She was able to look at the video and say definitively that that was him. One of the other interesting bits was in the surveillance video from the gas station. The gas station surveillance video was so good, he was looking at his phone while he was waiting in line. And you could actually zoom in on his phone, and you could see that the background wallpaper matched the suspect's Instagram photo. Very distinctive photo. After he was arrested on the Aurora robbery, he was sitting in the Aurora jail, and Detective With at the time went over and interviewed him, and he confessed to ours. So it most certainly was not used to just identify him and put an arrest warrant out. There was a lot of other footwork that was done on corroborating and looking to make sure that we had the right guy, or that we didn't have the right guy. So what facial recognition, recognition is not. It's not case closed, it's not a conviction, it's not the reason we charged somebody, it's not proof that somebody committed a crime. It's just a tool. It's just a lead, that's all it is. So the Senate Bill 22113 was signed into law June 8th last year, and it does a couple of things. One is it creates a statewide task force to monitor agencies who are using facial recognition. So we have to, part of it is that we have to, we would have to do an accountability report. That accountability report goes to this task force, and they are able to look into everything that we're doing and make sure that it's, that it's right. It also, the act also identifies prohibited uses, which we'll go over, and identifies the additional requirements for us, one of which is the notice of intent and the reason why we're here tonight. So the prohibited uses by the bill are that an agency shall not use facial recognition to engage in ongoing surveillance or conduct real-time or near-real-time identification. This is one thing that we did use to use it for. So our officers on the street had access to the facial recognition tool on their phones, and if somebody would- and if somebody would refuse to give them their name and they were being investigated for a crime, an officer could snap a picture and run it through facial recognition. That is no longer allowed by the bill. So this will become a tool almost entirely just for investigations. The law prohibits agencies from using it to target individuals based on their participation in a lawful event or a noncriminal organization, religious, political, or social views, perceived race, ethnicity, citizenship, immigration status, place of origin, age, disability, gender, gender expression, gender identity, sexual orientation, or other characteristics protected by law. The agency shall not create a record depicting any individual's exercise of constitutional rights or use the results as a sole basis to establish probable cause in criminal investigation. We also can't manipulate an image to use it in facial recognition. So the notice of intent, the law states that we have to inform our governing body, which is you guys, that we would like to use it or continue to use the software. And it also requires that we do the accountability report. Some of the things in the, these are actually all of the things in the accountability report. They're defined at length in the bill, of course, but we have to identify the facial recognition service, identify the data inputs, which I can tell you right now, that's going to be mugshots. Right now, the service that we used previously was through Lumen, which is a LexisNexis. I'm sure you've heard of LexisNexis. So it was a product through Lumen that uses, you know, we upload our mugshots, Jeffco uploads theirs, Denver, Aurora, Arbatah, a bunch of agencies in Colorado upload their mugshots, and that all goes into this database, and those mugshots are the things that are being used for the facial recognition. We define our purpose and proposed use, the use and data management policy, which we would create, testing procedures. We have to talk about false matches, protected subpopulation error rates. Again, the false matches is a little, it's not going to be super easy to have a false match because there's no just one person coming out of the system saying, "This is your guy." Impacts on civil liberties and feedback, of course, how to garner feedback and what we're going to do with that feedback from all of you and from the folks in Wheat Ridge. The law also states that prior to finalizing the accountability report, we have to allow for public review and comment, holding at least three public meetings to obtain feedback and consider the issues raised at those meetings. And we have to publish the final accountability report to the public website at least 90 days prior to beginning use of the facial recognition software. We have to continue periodic training of users and maintain records for public recording and auditing. And additionally, one of the other things that the law mentions is that we have to disclose that we used facial recognition on the defendant or anybody that we used it on that finds themselves in court. And then, of course, that's the link.
Got it?
More questions?
Okay. Thank you. We'll open it up for questions. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you. Just one of the things I wanted to clarify is you had said that the database is through mugshots, meaning someone has already had contact with the police department, and that's why they're in the database. Is there, are there other places that it gathers facial recognition information from that go into that database, or is it just mugshots?
The one that we would have access to is just going to be mugshots. Colorado Bureau of Investigations and the DMV can currently and do run facial recognition searches for law enforcement agencies upon request. So since in the time that we have not had access to this, I have sent some off to them to run, and they will run them, they can run them against other mugshots that they have access in their system for as well as DMV photos.
Got license plate. Okay, great. Thank you.
So if you have a driver's license, they would have your mugshot?
CBI or DMV would. We would not have access to that.
You would not, and with this facial recognition software, you wouldn't be seeking that?
No. No, yeah, there's no way that we have access to that.
Okay. Thank you.
DMV holds that very closely.
Counselor Holtein.
Thanks for this. I'm just sort of curious, and one of the prohibited uses that's listed is substantially manipulate an image for use in facial recognition. What, like, can you just put some parameters on that? Like, it doesn't say you can't do it at all, but what is considered substantial?
So it doesn't say that you can't do it at all. It doesn't really go into much detail than that, so my opinion on that would be, I could lighten a photo. If it's a very dark photo, I could lighten it, do the contrast or brightness. But anything more than that, I wouldn't even begin to try to do it and feel reasonable because, of course, I'm going to get called into court as to what I did and have to testify to it, so.
Just ask because we're, you know, just the news is rolling out in real time, the extent at which, you know, images can be manipulated.
Right.
Yeah, just the looseness in that language seems, it would be better just to say you couldn't do it at all, but just, yeah, for your protection. But thanks for this informative update.
We'll have an opportunity in our policy, too, to put other layers on top of this. So if we see something that's unclear, we're going to clarify it within our own policies.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm glad you guys have been able to find a tool that you're able to utilize in helping close some investigations. I'm just curious, when are the three public meetings, when are you going to do? Do you have a date for those yet, or are you going to do your policy first and then do those meetings?
Step one was here to make sure we brought it before our legislatures, and we had approval from you to go forward with this. I think that's important, that we bring it here first, then we'll work on policy, and once we have that, then we will schedule those meetings. It's going to be a long process before we get to use this tool, if we ever get there at all.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item. So it sounds like the first of a number of times we'll see you if we...
Unfortunately for you, Mr. Mayor, that may be correct.
It's okay. You're keeping it short.
All right.
I believe you're asking for consensus on us to move this project forward.
I am asking for consensus.
Show of hands. We have consensus to move it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great report.
Appreciate it, Beth.
Appreciate it.
Sorry I waited so long.
But it was a pretty interesting meeting, anyway. That concludes our regularly scheduled agenda items. We will now go to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Nothing really, just real quickly. You should have all received some of these brochures in your mailboxes, those who went to NC who gave you a packet. But please share these. I think we have about 100. Is that what you made? Or four? 500? Oh.
Amanda Dishing now.
Yeah, so please share these with constituents, anybody, stakeholders. They'll get dated soon, so just get them out. Please use them. Promote reciting, little great informational pieces that's got your contact information on too. That's all I got.
Thank you. We'll go to elected officials' reports, and with your permission, I had sent around a memo on a new Senate bill that was introduced, Senate Bill 213, which is the name, Land Use and Housing Affordability Bill. This has got some significant changes proposed for zoning and planning, how it might happen in the future. And now, this is under the purview of the local municipalities, but this piece of legislation would move that authority to the state level. They would create model codes, and you could change your code to adopt to that, or you could use the model code, along with several other provisions. I sent you all a memo. I think this really will change the way that we look at land planning and neighborhoods and development in our city going forward. So I wanted to have a discussion on this. There's been a significant amount of, well, both pro and con discussion on this issue. Counselor Nosler Beck sent around a memo from SWEAP Southwest Energy Efficiency Partners, something like that, that speaks to the pro positions in that. I'm sure you've hopefully had an opportunity to read the pros and the cons in the legislation on it, and I had included a possible resolution in opposition of this. I'll say that I think this is really, I think that the governor's plan has a lot of good things going on in it. I think their work around TODs, I think their work on manufactured housing, I think their work on corridor densification is really some great ideas in providing avenues for densification, which hopefully will lead to affordable housing. But I think the biggest sticker in my mind is that we would abrogate and release that control from local control where we have, you know, planning departments and planning commissions that look in particular at the details of how they happen in your community. And under this scenario, we would not have that same level of inspection. So I'd like to open it up. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can all agree, and we have all agreed in this room, that affordable housing is an issue, not only in our community, but in our state. I support your resolution. City Manager Goff sent out an email from CML that said if you'd like to put your name on this list, it'll also be going on Thursday for when it goes to committee. Here are my concerns. We are here to represent our community as our community wants to be, and we've already done our own affordable housing study. We know what works for our community, which doesn't necessarily work for everybody's community. And if there was a little more flexibility in there, like if you already have a plan and you're working towards it, then you don't have to take all of our X, Y, Zs, knowing that they were going to give you a year to adopt them in. But that's all blanket zoning, and we discuss in this room often that blanket zoning doesn't work. And also, just that the counties can have different exceptions. And so when you look at our municipality and between Golden Municipality, there's an incorporated Jefferson County there. And so that's a big patchwork of stuff that wouldn't even, across the street, wouldn't even have to follow the same rules. Also, just the real lack of outreach to the city leaders about this plan and for any input. And even the, I know the Metro Mayor's Caucus were trying to have conversation about this, and it wasn't allowed. And so this is a very jam-it-down-your-throat kind of thing, and I think that, and as I understand it, nonnegotiable. And I think that, and I can be a yes, but there needs to be some discussion around it. For now, I'm a no.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do know that there are, the governor's office is still soliciting quite a bit of input and that there are going to be several substantial changes that are going to be discussed at the committee this Thursday. And so I would prefer for us to see what comes out of that. I mean, I know, I've had a chance to work on this outside of my role here, and I mean, one of my concerns about it is that it's just trying to tackle too many things in one bill, and it doesn't really allow us to look at, like, land use efficiency for, like, housing affordability. I mean, it's trying to take on, you know, like, our transportation system and, you know, like, really critical issues around sustainability and resource management, and they're all really important issues. I think, you know, it's probably not going to look 100% different, but I think it will look a little bit different after it gets through this first committee meeting on Thursday. So I guess my position is I'd rather see what it looks like after it's had this round of feedback and input to see if it does listen and does change some of that. In my understanding is that they are looking at some of the suggestions Ms. Hoppe made around giving a lot more credits and flexibility around what do you already have, what are things that you're already doing, working on, and making sure that those are accounted in to, like, help create a statewide conversation. So I guess my interest would be to continue the conversation after we know more about it.
Counselor Nosler Beck.
I share many of the same concerns that have already been brought up. We, this was, I guess, introduced, and the governor was moving forward with it at the same time that, you know, the delegation from Wheat Ridge was in Washington, D.C. for the National League of Cities, and so got to see firsthand the lack of outreach that the governor's office did in putting together this plan. And that's, I guess, the piece that I'm struggling with the most, is that we have, Wheat Ridge is doing some really creative, innovative things on affordable housing here, and so are a lot of our neighboring communities. And I think that that would be a good place for this legislation to start. I will say that I encourage us, and I really do like some of the solutions that Councilwoman Holtein brought up about potentially just delaying a position for us. My thoughts were coming into tonight that I'd probably remain neutral specifically because this is just legislation being introduced, and I think that as a state, it would be very helpful if we had something that was setting the bar for where the state needs to be in terms of affordable housing, because we do need to address this regionally and at a statewide level. But I don't, and this legislation is in a place, I reached out to Senator Danielson and to Representative Monica Duran today just to see if we could have a conversation, too, on where they're landing on this, because they'll be the ones who can help us shape this as it pushes through committee and continues to move on. I just don't think we're in a place where we want to be saying that we are opposed or for it right now, because it's got a lot of work to do, and I do think there's too much, there's too much in this one package that doesn't have enough of our input in it. And so I encourage all of us, you know, any of us can go sign up and speak at the state Capitol at committee and talk about the importance and what's going on in our communities. And so I encourage us to do that. The biggest thing that I like about this is it lets the state as a whole start to make the case by doing some real analysis on unmet needs for housing in the state. And we don't have a good snapshot of what we actually need. And so when communities like ours are advocating for HUD dollars, so that's federal dollars, or dollars from DOLA and the state, we don't have a story to tell because we don't have the data. We just went through the polling exercise tonight and heard from our community, we don't have that kind of data to inform affordable housing in the state. And so that's why I don't want to oppose this, because we need that desperately, but there are things in there that I'm very concerned about. So I guess, very long story, is there's a lot of room for us to still have a huge impact on this piece of legislation. If it moves forward, I want our voice to be heard in it, and I encourage us to hear it out and look for the things that are good in it, and also go speak at committee and tell people about what Wheat Ridge is doing.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate you just raising awareness on this issue, and I agree and stand in opposition with you and CML. I feel like CML does a great job at advocating for local home rural municipalities, and I think that they offer potential resolutions, you know, to maybe come... think that they offer potential resolutions, you know, to maybe come in at least a neutral or in support of various bills, and I think that they do a great job at outlining, you know, what SB 23, 213 is, and why I feel like we have said we're already, have already adopted an affordable housing strategy, and I think a lot of our neighboring municipalities are as well, and I think we are accessible and readily available and have a much better pulse on what our communities need. And so I think that we should be able to continue to tackle that as we see fit and not how the state legislator does. Thank you.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding is that this may cause a potential erosion of the home rule municipality and create a slippery slope effect. I will be, I'd be in opposition of it. I think, I'm very, very pro affordable housing. I think if we want to go further, we need to look at, we've asked the voters to take out areas of heightened density, and then in those same areas where they can build high, they're allowed to only build three stories because of, you know, market conditions. And I think we should be more for assessing a value. I've asked this before, but I'd like to go and say that I think what we should do is we should look at, if we're allowing them to build those six stories and they want to build three, we assess that affordable units at six stories, whatever that number is, at the six-story rate. And if they want to do mixed use, I think we already have it that they can build higher, and then we could, that'd be the carrot that they wouldn't have to do affordable on that, whatever that extra story is, but that would be very pro affordable housing. As it is now, we have areas in our city where, in the TOD areas, they're building the three stories, where they can build six, and then they're coming into the neighborhoods and asking us to rezone so they can put another three-story, and the residents are getting upset about this. And so I think we really need to look at, I think we've done a really good job at our affordable housing, and I think we can do some more. I think our citizens really want to have a voice of, you know, what I say, where, you know, where they want this affordable housing and how it's going to be shaped, and I think we've done, I think everybody in council has done a really good job of advocating for it. We've hired some really good consultants to give us good guidance. I'm not in favor of what's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel that this is too much control, and it can be very disruptive to neighborhoods, and I say no.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
I guess I'll agree with most of my colleagues. It was interesting being in the room with 80 or so Colorado delegates or whatever the other, the other day in Washington, because I don't think there was a person in that room that was excited about this. I think everybody was pretty angry about this. In fact, we have a home rule charter, and we have a home rule charter for a reason. We want to make decisions for our citizens, we want to make decisions for us, and I think that, you know, we were founded that way, and I feel like we've done a pretty good job at being on kind of the leading edge of trying to work on affordable housing, but, you know, maybe there's other cities and other counties that haven't, I don't know. But I, you know, that's up to them, you know, and that's, you know, maybe that's what the governor's looking at, but, you know, from my perspective, we're trying to be leaders in this, and I don't see much in this bill that actually tackles affordable housing. I think this is a great way to add a bunch of houses, but that doesn't mean that they're going to be affordable by any means, and I don't see eroding neighborhoods and things like that, and, you know, basically putting us at the mercy of developers, because we will have no say in what they're going to build and how they're going to build it, and I have a huge issue with that. So I'm definitely opposed to this, and if it does go forward and passes, then we should go to court and sue, because we have a home rule charter and the government, or the governor is overreaching, in my opinion, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to speak to a couple of things that Counselor Nosher Beck brought up. This was just introduced a little over a week ago. The Speaker, Senator Moreno, put out a Google Docs form that was due back with any amendments that you wanted to put together, 10 o'clock last Thursday. Initially, they had set out the memo that this was sort of a no amendment bill, you know. I think that, I think everybody got pretty excited about this bill, actually. I, and I don't want to take a really, a totally negative position on this, because, like I say, there are some things in here that I think, that I think support the kind of housing and affordability strategies that we would go after, densification in the corridor plan by transit, and their work on manufactured housing and AUDs, we've already sort of addressed those in our, in our city. What I had hoped to do would be to propose, make this proposal that we could bring back to the full council meeting next week, after we've seen what they do on Thursday. Let's see what these amendments are that they are going to propose. Maybe they'll say that, you know, you might be able to get developers to put some parking on their projects. I think no parking on projects was really not a great idea. They asked me in a meeting with the governor's staff, what do you think that'd be like? And it was breaking the conversation. I said, "Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like Capitol Hill," you know, where you sort of circle the neighborhood and see if you can find a place to park. But I wanted to bring this out to council. There's a lot of discussion going on in the public realm. I think I'd like to sort of see what happens when it's in, you know, when the committee, when the committee meets on Thursday afternoon. Seeney Die, which is the close of the session, is 30 days from Thursday, so May 6th, so this thing is going to move like lightning through the process. So my hope is that we can, we can sort of bring this discussion, either bring this bill or make amendments to the ordinance that I put a draft out there at our meeting on Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. So would staff or you mayor be able to provide an update to council on Friday as to any substantial revisions that come out of the session on Thursday?
Yeah, we can try it if it's distilled. I think it's going to be a very long meeting, and CML will probably try to turn something around fairly quickly to us with some talking points. Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I had.
So are we putting, we're working on next week's packet already, believe it or not. Should we put a resolution in there for consideration? You can amend it on that Monday night if you'd like, or vote it down if you don't want to go that way, but...
Consensus to consider this again?
If we don't put a resolution on Monday, it's, session's going to be over soon.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll throw one on there.
Any other discussion on this item? Okay. Any other elected officials matters? I want to turn around and see the clerk. I can't see you, but I see... Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks to the city. Chief Murthav had the National League of Cities last week. Sitting behind me was a council member from Almont, and he was telling me about his woes of street racing, and I said, "I have an idea that was brought up by our chief," and so I forwarded him all that information. He was extremely excited about it. He was going to contact his people, and so you may get a phone call from a city Almont, a city council member, but they were really excited about all that effort, and I said, "We're really happy that went through for the city," so thank you.
Car recognition software, is it? Okay, all right. Counselor Holtein.
Thanks. Just a quick thank you to Patrick and LA and staff for supporting the trip to DC. It's, I always learn a lot in the opportunity to have conversations with peers from across the country. First of all, I always, I learn a lot about what they're doing, and there's a lot of inspiration, and, you know, we're a country full of people just like us trying to serve their communities, and it's great to be in the room with them. But I also love that we have the brochure. I mean, we, we're the only people who are like, here's who we are and here's what we're doing, and people want to know more about what we're doing, so I am always really proud to talk about the work that we do here. So thank you, staff, and thank you to our peers for being brag-worthy in our nation's capital.
It's part of the homework assignment for the marketing class. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will ditto what they said, but it was actually really impressive, and it kind of made me feel good being from Wheat Ridge, because we had people coming up and asking, you know, about the cyber attack, right, and how well we handled that, and talking about that a little bit. Got to give shout out to Counselor Nosher Beck, who was like interelement out there and did an awesome job. It was great sitting down with Representative Patterson, Patterson, sorry, Patterson, and getting to see the two senators, and, you know, hopefully our message was heard, but it was, it was a great trip, and I hope a very productive one for Wheat Ridge. So thank you to everybody who went and everybody who supported it.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I'm just going to bring it back home. The celebration to celebrate our city's incorporation is right around the corner. So this year's Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival will be August 11th, 12th, and 13th. We have registration open for the parade and as well as vendors, so please go to the website at thecarnationfestival.com and sign up and see the details for this year's festival.
Another thing, though, make sure you have it on your calendar. Representative Patterson has asked to meet with us on Monday, April 4th, here at City Hall at the 24th, yeah, I'm sorry, 4:24 at 3:00 p.m. So if you're able to make that, please come, if you'd like to see us all. Any further business to come before us tonight? We stand adjourned.